Okay, I'd like to call the December 11th, 2024 Board of Selectmen meeting to order at 8:00 AM. Mr. Pinio, do we have need for a non-public session?
We do not.
Okay. First item on the agenda is a board and committee appointment, Sharon Marvry Arvrelone, I don't know how to spell, say this, Marvry Lee O, or O, to the Board of Trustees of the Wolfboro Library. Is there anybody who'd like to speak to that? I was at the trustees' meeting, and they voted unanimously to appoint, recommend her to be appointed by the Board of Selectmen. Selectmen, anybody have any questions, comments, concerns?
Hearing none.
Just add a point of clarification. This is an appointment in replacement of Brody Duches, who has left the board, and this position will be up for election in March.
Correct. Does anybody make a motion?
No move. Second.
Any further discussion? I have a motion by Dave, second by Brad. All those in favor, a opposed. Okay, we're going to start with the warrant articles, and I think I'm going to pass it over to Jim for the opening comments.
Okay, so we are into warrant article season for the 2025 budget. And warrant, right now, you have 33 funding warrant articles sitting in front of you, not including the operating budget. That's $11,282,000 and some change. General fund cash warrant articles is 4.4 million. Some priority projects listed out here, Mill Street Sewer Pump Station. We'll get into the details of that as we get into the conversation. We have more information to glean, whether or not we can extend the bond and obtain loan forgiveness, or if it has to be cash. Municipal reevaluation, we're in year five, we need to do this. It was also stated last night at the Budget Committee meeting, that they, there's a member who intends to try to put this into the operating budget, rather than a warrant article. The ambulance initiative, we've been working on this for the better part of a year, and we've got to make some decisions going forward. The board endorsed the program, and year one, we have $816,000 sitting in front of us to bring that forward. Annual road repairs in the amount of 1.1 million. One of these will be a standalone hybrid project, River Street, 200,000 for road, 150 for water replacement. We are pretty sure that we have lead goosnecks in that line, and that's a priority line to get replaced. Police vehicle lease is in front of you, along with body cameras. Library parking lot and solar project, last board meeting, you discussed the solar project, and recommended that going forward for consideration as a warrant. We have got, right now, $168,455 in offsetting revenues, whether it's grant rebates or donations. Our annual capital reserve funding is the establishment of some new capital reserves and electronic fund transfers, and right now, we have an estimate of approximately $125,000 for soft costs for the public safety building, which we'd like to use some of the bond interest to pay for that project. Bonded projects, 5.6 million, 5,66,000, South Main Street, and then 336,000, based on a Betterment assessment, which both of those will require bond hearings. So that equals general fund cash in 2024 of 2.5 million, so you're seeing a substantial increase. Over to the right, and you have the complete full-size spreadsheet. This is a screenshot of the warrant articles tabulated for the general fund. When we look at it from where the funds are allocated, 78% is general fund, 6% for water, 11% for electric, 5% for sewer, and zero for pop whaling. So I would suggest we get right into it with municipal department. Barry, if you want to come up. This is a project that went through CIP process, Melanie and Kennison Island. I would suggest that you listen to what Barry has to say, and I would recommend that you could actually vote if you wanted to today, to recommend this project.
Good morning. Eric Mouchio, Wolfboro Electric Department. Yeah, so we've had this one on a 10-year plan for more than 10 years, I guess. Stuff out there, the infrastructure we have out there is fed by submarine cable. It's probably from the vintage of the '60s. Some of the oldest stuff we have out there on the lake really needs a full rebuild. That is our intent of this project. We, if you recall, we did have a capital outlay project for the engineering of this. We've opted to do the engineering in-house, just because it's not a tremendous amount of poles and infrastructure. We thought we could save some money by doing it in-house. Our staff was comfortable with that. Yeah, that's about it. It's similar to these, you know, these distribution upgrade projects we've done in the past. It's just out on the island. Everything is more expensive, specifically to get back and forth and travel and barges daily. So it's a little bit escalated cost per pole than what we'd see if it was on the mainland, but it really needs to be done. So I would entertain any questions.
Members, anybody? I have, I have one. Would you explain how we're going to pay for it, whether it's in the rates that we have right now, or whether in the future you will get a spike in rate?
Yeah, so this one would be built into our current rate. So, you know, we wouldn't necessarily bond it at this amount of money. We'd pay for it at our current rate structure. It's been built into our rate structure, because it's been in the program for, you know, 10 years plus, and these are all utilized to build our current rate. So that's how it would be funded going forward.
Brian?
So my only question is, I'm just wondering, how do you rank where you need projects done? And do the islands, because they're seasonal, fall down further in necessity?
So this project has probably got kicked down the line a bit over the years, as far as timing. But we, we obviously own the stuff out there. We have an obligation to maintain it and make sure it's safe, and that's my biggest concern right now. If we let it go too much further, we're going to get into scenarios where there is a safety issue with some fire danger and nuisance outages, and it's tough to get back and forth out there in the summer to work on this stuff. Everything, you have to do everything off hooks and climbing poles, and so it's due. There's never been a major upgrade out there since my tenure here, besides a pole here or there, but...
Any other member of the Board of Selectmen have a question, concern? And if I understood, Jim, right, we can make two votes. First, to recommend it, and then the second one is to move it to the warrant.
That is correct.
Okay. So do I have any member of the Board of Selectmen who'd like to make a motion to recommend this warrant article?
I'd like to make a motion to recommend the Melody and Kennison Island reconstruction project.
Do I?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Paul, second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I need a second motion to move it to the warrant.
I'd like to make a motion to move this to the warrant, the Melody and Kennison Island reconstruction to the warrant.
Second.
Okay. Again, I have a motion by Paul, second by Dave. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. On to the next one, Barry.
I'm just going to hand out an upgrading photo for the next one. I don't know.
So this project, Barry started last year. He removed it from the proposed warrant. This is some upgrades to the interior of the MED Armory Building. This is a critical infrastructure building, and this work needs to be done. Barry did begin working with Bergeron last September. Bergeron was able to, obligated to back out of the project, but I think Barry's done his diligence. It did go through CIP, and I think he's got a good handle on it. He'll present, and then I think, again, this is one that you should be able to vote on and move to the warrant if you so desire.
So over the years, since 2004, when we moved into the old Armory Building, we've addressed many issues, mostly on the exterior of the building. We did rebuild the office space. The garage was simply just painted. We did put a whole new roof on the top of it with insulation. But if you notice in that photo, it's basically had four inches of a BAT insulation and covered with some Tyvek, which certainly didn't meet any sort of current code criteria. I think, I don't believe it's fire resistant in that manner because of that, but that's how it was when we moved in. That recent photo I gave you was from yesterday, and you can see it's even deteriorated since my original request for this project. So what I'm proposing to do is to, is to basically put in a ceiling to cover all that insulation, BAT, Tyvek, that would be probably a lightweight steel roofing type of insulation there, to clean up that interior in case it. Did reach out to a couple folks for estimates. We were in the $70,000 range for the interior roofing installation itself. But as part of that, there's a lot of mechanicals, electrical equipment, lighting, junction boxes. All those items need to be lowered within that ceiling, because they can't legally be buried underneath the roof. So we'll have some expenditures for that work to be lowered, padded down, to continue access. And so I'm comfortable with that $100,000 number to encapsulate that ceiling.
And was this also calculated into the rate? Can it be covered by the rate?
Certainly, yeah. These capital outlays, although $100,000 is such a, if you, if you calculate it out, it's like one tenth of one cent on the rate, so it's almost not even negligible, you know, to notice. But yeah, it's certainly included in that.
Yeah, I just think the voters need to know that their rate isn't going to go up if they vote for either one of these two warrant articles.
It certainly won't be specifically for this one at that, at that cost, yeah.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions?
Just to piggyback on it. So you've had a, you've had a pretty, pretty robust capital program, get the poles done. You're done with that.
For the moment. Of course, the South Main Street's still up in the air, and that could be substantial. And that one got sort of shoehorned in. If we need to do that, that'll, that'll affect some future projects.
That was a several million dollar capital program. It looks like, I think to Linda's question, you know, for every dollar you take in in revenue, you, after you pay all your bills and write all your checks, you generate nine cents, which is pretty healthy. Your enterprise fund is, is doing very well. So Linda is exactly right in asking the question. Is this going to affect ratepayers? And the answer they're saying is, it's in the rate base. I've covered it with, with earnings. My big capital programs are done for the moment, and this is, this is probably, as well as the other one, is probably not a big deal for you. Is that a fair way to do it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have any questions or concern?
I just wanted to clarify. When we do enter into a new purchase power contract, that's sort of when we look at projects, rates, sales, revenue. That's when we determine those things. So that'll, that'll be up at the end of 2027.
27.
Yep.
Anybody else? Okay. I need a motion, if somebody would like to make it first to recommend, and then second to move to the warrant.
Motion to recommend the Armory Interior Ceiling, warrant article.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Paul first.
Brian.
Paul, motion by Brian, second by Paul, to recommend. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to move it to the warrant.
Motion to move the Armory Interior Ceiling warrant article to the warrant.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. I have a motion by Brian, second by Dave. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Barry. Our next project is, two projects in the library. First one is the library parking lot improvements. The library parking lot has some drainage issues. It's got some pedestrian issues. We've been working with Horsley and Witten for the better part of two years to get the design, which is done. They've provided us a pretty solid estimate to perform these repairs and get this project done, so that improves pedestrian safety and improves stormwater management on the site.
Does any of the selectmen have any comments? I have one. This, the layout of the improvements did go through Wolfboro Waters. We looked at the correction to the infiltration basin, and Wolfboro Waters was satisfied that this change will address the issue with the infiltration basin. Okay.
So who does Wolfboro Waters use for their examination of something like this?
They get, they get the layout from the engineers, similar to what they did with the public safety building, looked at it. We have people who have knowledge in, who were engineers and are retired, and they have looked at it and looked to see if we felt we were getting the coverage, and the system itself met what we were looking for.
It's good to have another set of eyes.
Yes, it is. And they have some, people with some very good skills on Wolfboro Waters, which we're lucky.
I would also say that Steve Randall, who was on site as a contractor, building this project to the specifications, has worked with Allison, myself, and Horsley and Witten to review the project, and I believe he feels comfortable with the project going forward as well.
Any other discussion?
Yeah, I do, if I could.
All right.
So I don't want to get into a long explanation, but my, I guess I'm pretty accurate, that this original project was put together by an engineering firm, went through the planning board, and was approved or recommended by this board to be, to be built. Something happened, and I really, I don't know what, but something happened that created some other changes to this project. I don't want to get into the sauce. I just want to know briefly, what happened? What have we learned? Why will we never do this again? Because it's a do-over, unless I'm wrong. If I'm wrong, I'll just retract everything I said. But this is a do-over of an original project. So what happened? What did we learn? And why won't this happen again?
Are those questions you'd like me to answer?
Yes.
So it is my understanding you are 100% correct. This did go through the planning board process. At some point between design and construction, there were changes made to the design. The changes which were made to the design, it's my understanding, were an effort to save funding. And the project that was built out was built out to how it was. The design was handed over to the contractors. As far as going forward, how do we handle this so it doesn't happen again? Well, we fund the projects appropriately. We execute the projects as designed, and I think that summarizes it. We've done that at the public safety building, and as a result, there are some expenses associated with that building that are pricey and will lead to long-term maintenance costs.
Can I just follow up? All right, Brian, go ahead.
You won't follow?
I don't want to follow up. So was the design, the design was not changed by the original engineering firm? It was changed locally? Is that a fair assessment?
I'm, I'm not prepared to speak on that. I, I know it was changed. I'm assuming that it was changed by the engineering firm at the direction of town staff. I'm not going to sit here and say that town redesigned the plans, because we don't do that type of work.
Yeah, the only, the only question I have about that is if the design was changed by the engineering firm.
It would have been done at the direction of the town.
And it was, and it's turned out to be an inadequate solution. Why wouldn't we be going back to the engineering firm and saying we want our money back?
Well, I guess, number one, we probably should have done that before the three-year statute limitations went past.
Okay.
And number two, as I alluded to earlier, I do believe that they were following direction of town staff.
Okay. Thanks, Jim.
Go ahead.
Jim, what year was this, this happened?
I believe the warrant article was approved in 19.
2018.
2018. Paul, were you on the board then?
Yeah, I was.
Okay. And I don't know if I have any other questions.
I think one thing I'll point out is it was the library trustees and the librarian who are overseeing this project, as I recall.
Correct.
The other thing that happened to the infiltration basins, and I think it was after the, most of the construction was done, they wanted a walkway across. And so they dropped down a walkway, not realizing that they just wiped out the retention basin. So some of it was after the fact, which is causing the puddling, which is causing the safety issue of people slipping.
And in this new design, is there any additional work that was not contemplated in the original site plan? In other words, is there more stuff, or are we just correcting what was probably not done well?
I think we're correcting the stormwater issues and the pedestrian issues. I believe there is no other initiatives that I can recall with this project.
Got it.
And I agree with you. That's what I remember.
So it will be back to the, because I wasn't on the board at the time.
Good for you.
It will be back to where it was originally for the original engineering, or as close to as possible.
I don't think so. It's a completely different design, completely different engineering firm, and I don't have those documents in front of me that went to the planning board in 2018.
Yeah, they're right there. Would our, our now not in the picture town planner been, have been involved in this situation?
Nope. That would have been before he was hired. That would have been under Mr. Hausman and Mr. Sullivan.
Okay.
Sullivan.
Is there any other for discussion?
Just, just because I think Brian's probing in an area, so I'll just try to help here. So this, this came before the planning board. There's a, the planning board had some questions about the, about the design. Photographs were taken. The library trustees or the library themselves were overseeing this. My question to Jim was a legitimate question, which was if the engineering firm designed something, got it approved, built it, it was wrong, we should get our money back. Somehow, that was a field change. However that happened, it happened. The result of that didn't manifest itself for, I guess, a couple of winters. Long story short, and Jim has answered the question I asked, is he explained what happened, what we learned is what we design is what we build, and, and we don't do anything until we build it. And I think that answers my third question, is how we don't have that happen again. So I wasn't looking for a victim. I was just looking for an answer, and I think Jim has provided the answer, and I appreciate that.
Any other discussion, concerns about this warrant article? Does anybody want to recommend it?
Just, I would add, for those viewing at home, if they can't see the screen, this has an impact on the tax rate right now, estimated at six cents per thousand for 2025.
Or would the board like to not recommend it at this time, leave it in those that we may want to talk further on and maybe get some more information? How would you like to move forward?
I think I agree with that. I think I'd like to, you know, once we get down through a lot of these, we're going to make some decisions, obviously, and I think keeping some of these on the table, have that discussion on would be a good idea. So I'd lean towards, at least at this point, not moving it forward onto, onto that, so we could discuss it further.
I'm with you at this point.
Adam, Sharon, what else do we need to know? What else do we, do we need to know?
Well, I think we just need to know, when we get to the point where we're going to be making some cuts here, we're going to make some choices on which ones. And I think some of these, we should leave on the table for that discussion. I'm not talking about, necessarily about the deed or anything like that of the article. I'm talking about just the monetary impact.
And I think that, I'm with Brad on that. 4.4 million dollars is a huge number, and I think we are going to have to do some sorting in here. And I don't think we can cut it back to 2.4 of last year, but I think there is some choices and thought that we, as a board, should have. So I, I support Brad in that. Dave, how are you feeling on that?
I feel the same way. Just wait on, come back to it.
Yeah, my, my question was, do we need to know more content-wise, what, for a decision? Or are we just parking this for a later discussion about whether it fits in the budget? That was kind of my, what do you need to know?
I, I think you're the one who's asking the question about content, so you can let us know.
I'm done. I'm done with the content stuff.
So we're talking about money. Brian?
I think that it's something, and I think a lot of them, we're going to just put to the side now and see where our final tally is, and I hope they don't all become this convoluted.
Okay.
Madam Chairman, I just say, you'll park it. You're going to park it. Well, we'll talk about it later. I won't, I won't go any further.
We just got to remember, we need to raise our hand, because it gets back and forth here. So let's see if we can, there's a lot we have to cover, so I'd like to move a little quicker. The library solar project, and I know Nancy Hirschberg is here, and I don't know if anybody has any questions. My only question, it says that it's 31,641 that we're getting for taxation, and is that correct? Nancy, is that figure right?
The, I'm not sure where that number, so the key is, if we get the rebate from the federal government, that's $52,000. That's the loan, basically, that we're asking the town to, to, well, I won't use those terms. But if we don't get it, then the town, there will be a cost of 52,000 to the town. Is that the IRA funding?
Yeah, I just, I'm just not sure that this wording, it explains everything. I don't know where the other board members or, or Jim on this. It seems like that we may need to take out a $52,000 loan.
Yeah, I, I think I do have a calculation error here. I would also say that we have to appropriate the full 176.
Yes.
And we will offset the revenues, hopefully, to the tune of $168,000, based on the calculations that Nancy gave me. I did not make an adjustment to the 31,000, so that's an error on my part.
So just a, just a process question. So we have to appropriate all the money, so that does have an effect on the tax rate?
Correct.
So the answer here on estimated tax rate impact is not 00. That's got to get adjusted.
Correct.
Okay, so park this one.
I'm going to ask other people if they're okay. Brian?
So based on these numbers, I see that the most we're going to get, and this is a Nancy question, the most we're going to get is 168,455. Is that the most that we're going to get, including the $52,000 grant?
Yes.
And we need 176,000. So, so it's somewhere between 8 and 60,000 that we're going to have to get from the taxpayers, and we're hoping for the 8,000.
Exactly. And since our meeting, it's actually dropped down to 5,5800, but yes.
Okay. And so, Jim, I guess you'll clean this up a little bit, and you will put a tax- Okay. And so Jim, I guess you'll clean this up a little bit, and you will put a tax, a tax rate impact based on the worst-case scenario, that we don't get the fifty-two thousand?
I have to put the tax rate impact based on the one seventy-six.
On the one seventy-six, okay.
Based on gross budgeting. And then the revenues will offset that and
We're going to have to have a very good explanation about this that goes through for people to understand. Because we're even going on, is it, and when I saw that figure, it was one that I hadn't seen before. So, so am I correct that we will park this? And put it over there to get it ironed out, correct information, and we will review it again?
Sounds good.
Yeah, if you look at the library parking lot improvements, that was a hundred and sixty thousand, and it was a six-cent tax impact. So going forward and looking at this, it would probably be again about a six-cent impact. But it's not going to be a six-cent impact with all the funding and grants and everything. In reality, for the taxpayer, it may only be one or two cents.
The other thing I would say is, you know, based on the document I provided you, you're going to have a library electric bill that's going to save the operating budget in the neighborhood of eleven to fourteen thousand dollars a year.
Yeah, so it's a break even of one year.
That's important for us to get all that information and be real accurate on it. Any other discussion on either one of the library Warren articles? If not, I'll move on to Park and Recreation, the Abenaki Capital Reserve Fund.
Okay, so this is the Abenaki Capital Reserve Fund. One cent per thousand. Beau and Christine are here to speak to this. You as the Board of Selectmen are trustees to expend this capital reserve fund. We did utilize some funds to purchase the new groomer, which is on site. And I'm not sure what they have scheduled over the next couple of years for replacement equipment.
Hi. So looking at our spreadsheet, I do need to get correct balance funds from Sam, just because we did expand. We did have on for twenty twenty-five was the groomer and a rope tow motor. But we were able to get that in twenty twenty-four, and in twenty twenty-three, I believe we got that rope tow murder, motor. So the last thing that we need to get for this year would be the rope. And it wouldn't be for this season, it would be for next season. So most likely, it would be after we close for the season, we would have to get a new rope for Abenaki. And then our next big purchase will be a snowmobile. Our snowmobile is working, but it is on one of the last legs. So we just have to start babying that a little bit, looking at that.
I have comments about all the capital reserves, so what I make, I'm not meaning, just you happen to be the first one out. But when I went over this, the amount that we're contributing annually doesn't match up. And I'll go, the snow piping, it's twenty years, it shouldn't be one thousand, three hundred, it should be thirteen thousand. So what we're putting in doesn't match. I look at what we were saving for the groomer, and it was a hundred thousand. We've got to go through all our capital reserve upgrade, the, the cost. We've got to check on their life expectancy, and then have a realistic figure that keeps these accounts, you know, so that we are saving for the future purchase. So that's one thing I would like to see, and make sure the top and the bottom are the same. Any other comments from selectmen?
Just a comment that I would have, and this is probably more directed toward Christine. But, you know, I look at this one, and I'm not sure that the replacement of a rope at the tune of four thousand dollars should be incorporated within a capital reserve fund. That should be an operating budget item going forward, in my opinion. I'm just curious as to the board and Christine's thoughts on that, and if we should revisit everything within this budget.
Madam Chairman.
Yep.
Help me understand why, Jim? A little more texture on that.
I don't think it's a capital expense.
Yeah, I think it's
It's an operational expense associated with
Buying the rope, installing the rope?
Yep.
How much does the rope cost?
It's about four thousand dollars, and it gets a three-year lifespan.
Right. And Casey said, when I had talked to Casey, she had mentioned the same thing to me. And she said anything under five thousand really probably shouldn't be in this. It would be more like an operating expense planned for it, so we would see it every three years. That would be in my budget, and then we would pull it out or whatever.
No, that was, he answered the question, it's how long the rope would last, and Jim answered that.
I believe in the past, this was in the operating budget. And when you start, and it's not, I don't think it started with you. You started to say, oh, I got to bring my budget in a certain line. Oh, well, I'll take that out of the capital reserve. I think some of that switching happened. I agree, that's an operating expense. It's under the amount, and it should be in the operating budget. Any other comment by any other selectmen?
That's a, that would be a practice, not necessarily a policy, but a practice we would kind of do across the town. Is that what you're, is that what you're kind of saying?
Uh, yeah, well, I think we do try to do that as, as a practice across the town. You know, the, the highway department, the fire department, their capital reserve funds, those are for actual capital projects and not for these ancillary supporting operating costs.
And another way I would look at it, when we established it, was really to replace the gifts that we got from the Friends of Abenaki, which were those large pieces and not a tow rope. Brian, thanks for raising your hand.
Where it comes a little funny is, you think of maintenance costs as things you do every year, and a rope falls every three years. So then you're like, well, where does that land? But if it's something that is completely reoccurring, and it's a small dollar value, it makes sense to put it in your maintenance cost.
Anybody else? Any comments? So we'll, do we want to move this forward, or is this another one? I'd kind of like to park it. We've got to try to decide, and I think we have a long discussion on capital reserves and how we want to address capital reserves. But I will take a poll of board members, and I'll start down here with Dave. What do you?
Park it.
Park it.
One last question.
Yeah.
How long is the rope and on the, how old is it?
This will be the third year, so it will be due for replacement.
Don't park it.
Brian?
I think that there'll be money for the rope, if we need a rope, in the budget. And that I agree that, looking at the capital reserve fund for Parks and Rec, it just needs to be swept clean. They need to clean it up a little bit, so that we know what we're pushing forward, and taxpayers understand what they're getting. So I agree with
Parking it?
Parking it.
Okay. And so what I also hear out of you, Brian, is that by the time we come back to it, if this could be worked on, it would be helpful for all of us here. Okay? Thank you very much.
Thanks, Christine.
Okay, our next Warren article will be under the Police Department, Police Vehicle Replacement. They're looking to lease three new vehicles over a four-year period. Total amount, two hundred and nine thousand, one hundred and sixteen dollars and seventy cents. This year's appropriation would be a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two sixty, two eighty. Out years for the next four would be eighty-nine thousand, one twenty-nine thirty. Feeling a little nervous being surrounded by two police officers. I've been there before, I guess. With that said, I believe the department, last year, they lost a vehicle at town meeting. They did ask for one, it did not get approved. And I think they're down, they'll be able to speak to what they're down for police vehicles. I would also just note that the Budget Committee has every year asked the Police Department to look at lease programs for police vehicles. And I guess I'll hand it over to the chief and the captain.
I think the vehicles are mine, with Mark here, just in case I get myself confused.
A little closer.
Good morning, all. I, this is actually a new world for me with regard to how the vehicles are purchased. The amount of time that we keep cruisers, I've never seen anything like it before. So it's been kind of a learning curve for me. I did do some research and realized that, as Jim stated, last year, there was a cruiser that was asked for and was denied. Sounds like a big echo. I don't think it's in my head. And prior to that, it had been a while. So I had looked at the fleet of vehicles within the Wolfboro Police Department, and found that there's actually eight Mark Cruisers, plus the Tesla that was a donation in two thousand and nineteen or so. But one thing I did realize is the amount of time we're holding on to cars gets expensive. And this was kind of a conversation that we started to have with the Budget Committee recently. And I imagine we'll have another conversation with them on that. It was the amount of hours. This is a concept that is a lot more apropos with, with towns and cities, and even states that hold cars a long time. Idle time. How tasked is the engines on these cars? As we all look at our mileage on our personal vehicles and say, well, it's, it's got eighty thousand, ninety thousand, a hundred thousand, it's time to get, get rid of it. But we don't really do that with our service fleets. And a communication with Ford Motor Research and General Motors have both agreed that for every hour idle time is equated to thirty-three miles of actual road work as far as how much you're, you're tasking the engine and all the moving parts on a car. So I plugged that into what the current fleet is. There are four cruisers that were manufactured in two thousand and sixteen. I learned that those cruisers were all leased. So the department has leased vehicles in the past, and I'm not sure where that confusion was. But those are the vehicles, they're the oldest ones in the fleet. They were all purchased, or leased purchased, in two thousand and sixteen. The mileage on those cars is, from lowest to highest at current, one sixteen thousand, one twenty-eight thousand, one thirty-seven thousand, one fifty thousand. That's a lot of miles. That's straight mileage. I have done the research to find out the amount of hours on the cars. And what you do is you take the, the hours, which is, you can get right off the instrument panel nowadays, and you multiply that by thirty-three, and then you subtract the amount of miles that are on the car. Because you can't, that'll, that would give you, to you twice if you didn't do that. So those mileages actually are, from lowest to highest, two hundred and eighty-one thousand, three hundred and sixty-eight thousand, four hundred and fifty-nine thousand, four hundred and sixty-eight thousand. That's a lot of miles. The first thing I look at is safety. Are our employees, our police officers, our, our town employees, are they safe? The second part of the safety is, are they going to get to the folks that need them to get to them in the vehicles that have this kind of mileage? And the third thing I look at is, what's this costing us to keep these things going, and is it worth it? Obviously, or I hope it's obvious, these are all very high, and they shouldn't be that high. We have to think a little differently as far as mileage. And in, in a community like this, where there's as many boats as there are, you all understand hours, and how much more that makes sense when you're talking about how much work a motor goes through in its, its lifetime. The replacement vehicle, it's a lease purchase. It's a four-year lease purchase, whereas you'll notice the first year is significantly higher than year two, three, and four. And that's because the first year is the outfitting of the three cruisers. The second, third, and fourth year are, is the lease purchase. At the end of that fourth purchase, the cars are like the two thousand and sixteens are now, fully owned by the town. It does have a non-appropriation clause in the thing from the N F S. And I don't know if I've covered everything that you might want to know, but if you have any questions, may inquire.
Brian?
So darn you, you answered most of my questions. But there was a couple. One, and I've wondered this for a while. Do we ever shop other manufacturers, or are we just with Fords?
We, we do. There, if you'll notice that outfit, that's not a total outfit. We're going to be using equipment from the cruisers that we have. And a lot of times, police departments get, get kind of cocky. And once you buy the cages and the, what I like to call the cowcatchers, those bumper guards in the front, and a few of the other things, you're kind of stuck to your manufacturer. I myself am not a Ford person, but it makes the most sense. There are quite a few other companies that are trying to do some competition. They can't, they don't have the, they don't have the background or the amount of time that's worth it. Chevy did push a little bit, but they get expensive. They had one year where they were cheaper, and then the next year, they, they shot right above Ford. And it's, it's just a hard manufacturer to compete against.
So my, my other, this might be silly or not silly. And we understand, miles wear out a car, hours wear out an engine. That's the way it works.
It's oversimplified, but okay.
Could we have hour meters installed in these vehicles?
What's that? I'm sorry.
Could we have hour meters installed in these vehicles? We have them, they're in all boats. I mean, it's a, it's a
We don't need to, because Ford put a bit.
They put them in the car.
Oh, they are putting them in the car.
Yeah. You can go to any of the cruisers and see right away what the amount of hours are on it.
Okay.
It's a fairly new concept.
Okay, excellent.
Okay, I have a number of questions, and I've done some, looking at what we had said in the past. And when we started with the console, we met with the Police Department and asked for an asset management plan for your cruisers. And that would be something that would come through. And what we told the voters at that point in time, we'd have ten cruisers, and we would replace one a year. And so that is what's out there, in what we have told of them. I went and picked up what you told me last year, listing out on where they were as data. And yet, the voters turned it down. You only got fifty, forty-five percent yes. You got five, five yes from the Board of Selectmen, five from the Budget Committee, and three against from the Budget Committee, and this went down. So I start saying, if, if you're going to change your asset management plan, we need to see what that new plan is. This should have gone through C I P because it has an impact, because what we're trying to see, what's going to happen with the tax rate. I understand you're new. I understand the whole process.
I'm new. It's my first day. Let me, let me stop you right there before I miss the point. Asset management plans, C I Ps, and the plan for the futures, these are all great until the year that somebody says, now we don't want to do that anymore.
Well
Then you're, then you're trying to follow up, you're trying to make up what you did to get back to what that great plan was.
Exactly.
Couple of things have happened here that I can find in my research. One is, last year's two cars literally fell apart. And an electric vehicle was, was donated, which caused the town not to get a, a gas or hybrid cruiser that year. All these things have an impact on your, your plan. And I don't, it really doesn't matter what size town you're in, whether you have two cars or forty cars. Once you have the plan, as soon as that plan gets changed a little bit, then you have a choice. Either you throw everything out the window and replan again, or you try to catch up and get back on task.
I understand that.
And I think that's what we're trying to do, is, is get back on task. We, we have eight cars that are patrol vehicles. We have one that's an admin car, and we have the radar trailer. There were ten patrol cars, right?
There used to be eleven. We lost three.
Okay, even more. And I think at some point, there was a decision And I think at some point, there was a decision made, okay, ten cars, ten years, that's one a year. And simple math being what it is, great, that's, it's not going to happen. So how do you get back on board, or is that really what you want to be on board with? But your point is, we'll take it.
And part of the reason I'm asking this is so the public understands, because they said no. And so, one, I think we made an error buying three cars at once. Now we have three cars in that, in that lease, was a lease. I think it was only three, we did four that week?
Did four.
Okay, four, even worse. It got us into a bigger hole, because four, and so, I don't think that's a good solution. I could take this if you were saying, I'm going to purchase two. You owe me from last time and this time. And then, or come up with a very solid asset management plan redone, so we can lay that out to the public on why this is this, where you are today, what adjustments you've made, and why you're asking for what you're asking for today. And I think that's the best hope to get the public to understand and to vote in favor.
Right. And I also think there's a, we're lost in translation here as well. Because for you and me, buying a new car is a huge thing in our, in our, in our home. You know, we save up for a long time, we buy the car, we have payments for seven years or whatever. And that's, that's a huge capital expenditure. In law enforcement, that's a piece of equipment that we use every day. And it's different. But it's hard to make that leap for most folks to understand.
And that's what didn't happen last year, and why I'm asking the questions and having this conversation, so we can get to better explain and get them better to understand in a year where we have a huge amount of ask. So that's why I asked the question, because when I look, those are the questions I started to have. And so, getting questions asked now and being able to answer them at the deliberative session is-
And we're not adding any cars. We're still behind, literally, because we would be getting rid of three of these highest mileage cars that are costing us the most money. Anything, Brian, have a question?
That was my question. When you get these three, what's going to be your total fleet number? It's still going to be eight.
Same number.
It's going to be an eight fleet, so we're still down two. And what's the interest rate? That was my last question.
Five point nine seven. But it can go down.
It can go down.
I'm hoping it will.
Yeah, that's, that's a decent-
All indicators are that it probably might. How definitive is that?
So you get three cars. Now, is there a way to manage your cars so that they end up with staggered life expectancies? Is there a way to manage your fleet so that you know that in nine years, we don't have to replace three all at once?
I believe there is. A lot of it is, it's a constant-
Designate cars to certain routes or to certain officers that don't travel as much?
Right now, what we're trying to do is kind of a, it's a derivation of something called the Indianapolis Plan, which, which puts an officer or two officers to a certain vehicle only. Because it's been proven that cars will last longer if the driving habits are the same.
Correct.
So we're trying to establish that if it's Car Two, then Officer Jones is in Car Two. That's it. Officer Jones then takes better care of it, treats it as his own or her own vehicle, and it lasts longer. As far as your other question about can we stagger them, I think you have to, or you're going to run into this problem.
Correct.
Where you have these four cars, I mean, the, the amount of mileage on it is, to be honest with you, ridiculous. It's just way over the top. And I can recall, the IACP, the International Association of Chief Police, were very, very adamant many years ago, that cars shouldn't go by eighty to a hundred-and-ten thousand miles. Again, it has a lot to do with where you are. Are you in the city? Are you rural? Are you a state trooper on the highway? And different states actually have some standards of mileage. New Hampshire does not, thank goodness. We can make our own decision and decide what makes the most sense for us. There is no place that I can find, especially when we put in the hours and do that compilation, there's no jurisdiction in this country that would suggest this kind of mileage is a good thing, is a smart thing. So yes, the three highest ones would go.
And you could maybe, one of these cars is dedicated to the officer that goes to downtown all the time, so that it's parked a lot in the summer, it doesn't travel as far, things like that.
Right, right. It would have, like, it's limping duty now. It's, it's earned its time, where it's not doing a whole lot of regular ten-hour patrols up and down all the different roads in town. It would be probably parked a lot down on the main street with the officer doing foot patrols and these types of things, but that's the plan.
Brad or Dave, do you have any questions? Paul?
Thank you. Brian, thanks for asking the interest rate question. So six percent money is being used for this capital lease. I have a couple of questions. One is a rhetorical question. The question would be from you guys, if you could. A statement that would say something like, the Wolfboro Police Department will have enough officers to drive X number of cars in fiscal year 2025. That's a headcount question. That would be a good, that would be a good number to know, because it argues for more Cruisers, it also argues for completing the headcount journey. I'd like really, really to know that. My selfish interest on that one. And Sam, this, this would, this lease of a hundred-and-thirty-eight or two-hundred-and-nine thousand would go on to our debt schedule? Is that how it would work?
I'm sorry.
I believe so, yes.
I was asking Sam. It would go on to our, it would go on to our debt schedule?
It would go on to our debt schedule, but it would be accounted for in their operating budget.
No, I got it. Yeah, so their budget gets a tag, but the debt schedule gets a hit. So we're carrying, and again, not for any bravado here, our mortgage payment this year is three-point-eight-three-six million dollars. That's the mortgage payment we're writing annually. We're carrying roughly thirty-two million of debt. And as a percent of total appropriations and other stuff, we could have all these arguments that, you know, it's a small number, it's not really that big, and all that kind of- I don't like, I don't like capital leases that add to the debt schedule. Plus, I do ask myself the question, are we using short-term operating budgets to fund capital projects? And something inside of my feeble mind says, it's not a good idea. So I just, I just have a, I don't know if it's a moral, that's a bad thing, I just have a kind of a, just not really comfort with that. But my really big, my really big question is, will PD have enough resources to actually drive the cars in 2025? And if the answer is no, then what are we doing?
Are we still being rhetorical?
No, that's a direct question. If the answer is yes, then tell me when you're going to need them, and then we can have a conversation about how many cars you got.
We have enough personnel for the amount of cars that we have.
Do you have enough personnel for the cars, for ten cars, eleven cars?
No, we have, we have eight cars.
Okay. You'll have enough personnel for eight cars. You'll have enough personnel for eight cars. But this is, so in 2025, you'll add one more car, that'll keep you at eight. In 2026, you'll add one more car, that'll keep you at eight. In 2027, you'll add one more car, it'll keep you at eight. Is that how it works? No, explain the math.
I think that's what I was saying in wanting an asset manager. We want that laid out, because I think you're saying something different on how to replace cars.
You're lease purchasing three vehicles. You're getting rid of three old vehicles.
They're all going to show up at the same time.
Hopefully. Yeah, theoretically, yes. The period of the lease runs four years, much like they did for the 2016s.
And that's why we're stuck in this kind of loop, and that's why I was asking if it's a way to manage the cars so that in eight years, you have maybe one that has only fifty thousand miles, one that has seventy thousand miles, and one that has a hundred, do you know what I mean, by trying to manage-
Well, there is. But the issue with that lies in, what's too much?
Yeah.
And I'll give you an example of that. The straight mileage of the highest car, the one that the captain drives, is a hundred-and-fifty thousand, nine-hundred-and-thirty, ninety-nine miles. The lowest of the four 2016s is Car Nine. That has a hundred-and-sixteen thousand, six-hundred-and-seventy-five. The difference between those is, what, thirty-four thousand?
Yeah.
That's quite a difference.
Correct.
So the lowest amount is just going to keep going, obviously, as long as you keep the four cars. So where do you say, woo, throw the flag, we're done, we're done accumulating miles? Because these four cars, one-hundred-and-sixteen thousand, one-hundred-and-twenty-eight thousand, one-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty thousand, they're spread out. I think they're more spread out, not by design of, oh, take that car, don't take this car, but just because drivers are different. Drivers do different things. But when Car Two, which is a hundred-and-fifty thousand, that gets to, say, two-hundred thousand, these other cars will climb up too. In ratio, I would, I would guess, they're all not going to get to two-hundred thousand at the same time.
I hear you're saying you're going to change this chart. You're going to base it on hours the car runs, and you're not going to keep them as long. So what I think we're struggling with, you should put another one of these together. We get these four new cars. I don't think, I hear you keeping them ten years. How long do you plan to keep them, estimating how much they run? What is the turnover rate? And what are we looking for on a consistent basis on how we're going to replace our Cruisers? Because you're telling me this is way too high. And so if I'm going to explain it, or we're going to explain it to the public, we have to let them know why we're not going to follow this format anymore.
Right.
Going into a new format. And I think that's kind of what, at least that's what I'm struggling with, is kind of trying to say, we went from this, now what are you really saying of where we go?
Yeah, and not being privy to the conversation before-
Yep, yep.
I can't understand how anybody in a group would think that a hundred-and-fifty thousand isn't too high. So I'm coming into this kind of blind and trying to figure out what mileage were we talking about that's okay. These cars are running about twenty thousand miles a year, by the way, if anybody had that question in the back of their heads. That's basically what I've noticed it running. Agency, agencies in towns that are this demographic, this geographic, typically run around thirty to thirty-five thousand. We have a lower because we have a downtown. So that coupled with the insistence that officers get out of the car and wander feet and use those for a while, have less than miles on cars. I mean, it's, that's, that's simple math. But the problem is, we have eight cars at twenty thousand instead of, say, six cars at thirty thousand, so-
So what's your long-term plan?
I have, I have a concern with capital, anything. I don't think it's a project, because this is, this is equipment that we do business with every day, every year. You gotta replace it. It falls apart, it rusts, it breaks. We fix it, and then when it gets expensive to fix, we get another one. We do the same thing with firearms. We do the same thing with soft-body armor. We do the same thing with everything that these officers rely on to do their jobs. Police cars are those things. That's their office. That's where they do their job. That's where they get the people to do the job. So it's, it's really not a project, per se.
I think Paul wanted-
Yeah.
Brian, you have a call.
So the, the asset management plan that Linda is showing you was born at the Abenaki Ski Lodge one night when we were doing budget reviews with, with you folks. And so it's, it's a handful of years old. I support what Linda's saying. We need to have more clarity about what your, I intend to retire vehicles. I have no idea whether a hundred-and-thirty, a hundred-and-fifty. I don't, that's your job to figure out what the useful life of these things is, using best practice thinking. Here's a delicate question. Why wouldn't we just, you know, put this out as, was it three Cruisers? Why wouldn't we just put this out as three times unit price per Cruiser and be done with it? It's capital. Why wouldn't we do that? If the answer is, it would look ugly in front of the voters, that's a bad answer. Why would we not just put it out as capital and say, let's just do that?
Just buy the three?
Sure.
It's been done before.
I'm just asking why it's here in front of us now. I'm asking why is it here in front of us now as a lease, as opposed to a capital purchase? In a few minutes, we're going to be looking at capital purchases of cars and other items when we talk about our ambulance business. Why wouldn't we just put it out? If the answer is optics, then I would not be really happy with an optics answer.
I think if I understand the setup clearly, you're spreading out that mega payment over four years.
At six percent.
That, yeah, five point nine.
And you're running up the run rate of the town's operating budget, so that our fixed costs are running up, you know, you're creating a situation where the fixed costs of this town are getting, you know, really high, where you don't have any wiggle room. And my question is, why wouldn't we just put it out as a one-time capital purchase and three times three?
Well, I think that's a, it's a valid question to both the Board of Selectmen and the Budget Committee. I think the Budget Committee has historically wanted leases.
It's also a valid question for you.
What's that?
It's a valid question for the PD to help us financially understand how that impacts the town.
I think it allows the police department to have the three vehicles it needs now instead of having one vehicle a year, because financially, I think it's smarter financially, just with the numbers, to buy a car a year, every year, for three years. But that doesn't get that third vehicle the year that it needed, and that gets the mileage on that third vehicle down a whole lot higher by the time it's, time is switched around. And I always equate this to the Capital Reserve argument, where a town puts money aside every year for a fire truck. And you don't get the fire truck until you have enough money in your bank. So when you finally get the money for your bank, you go out and buy your fire truck. While the person who's been putting the money into the bank for the fire truck doesn't get to enjoy the fire truck. And on the year that you finally get the fire truck, the person who's been paying for it for ten years moves. Sold his house, passes away, who knows? But he has been paying ten years for an item that he never was able to enjoy. This way, the lease happens, you're paying for it, but you have the, the equipment immediately.
So let's look at money the way we should look at money. An average vehicle is increasing in cost three to four percent a year. That takes your four percent lease payment and makes it a little bit less, more like two percent or three percent. Then you get the time value of money, which would be for four years. That's going to eat into that six percent lease cost again, so the cost of your lease, effectively, is not six percent. It is if you look at a snapshot, but if you look at it globally, the cost of your lease is probably one percent. And you're spreading out the cost to the taxpayers over a period of four years, which has a more minimalistic approach on your, your, your tax rate. So I don't see leases as a bad number if you look at the numbers correctly. And I believe that the fire, the police department and the fire department should both have good vehicles. I would drive from here to Ohio in a twelve-year-old car with a hundred-and-fifty thousand miles on it. If it broke down, though, it wouldn't matter. If you're going to an emergency situation and your a hundred-and-fifty thousand mile car breaks down, it is now an issue. It's a safety issue. So I don't have a problem with this. I, I would like to see a new plan in place. I would support this, but I would like to see a new plan in place that's more realistic for how you think this department needs for its cars. But I'm not going to stop something like this to, to have our, our police department not have the proper safety equipment, because that's what that is. That's safety equipment, and going forward. So I, and I hope that they can kind of mold this so that we end up with a one-car replacement a year, whether it be eight years, nine years, or ten years, however, however we do it.
I, I think to answer your question, I understand what you're saying. I, I think to answer your question, I understand what you're asking for. I, I think it's the immediacy of the situation is, is causing me a little consternation.
Okay.
But if you, if you would look at mileage, that next car in line, that, that number four car in the two thousand sixteen has got a hundred and sixteen thousand miles on it. And the next ones in line are eighty-six thousand, sixty-nine thousand, forty thousand, and seventeen thousand. So they're, they're, they're breaking away from each other to the point where I think we can, uh, make a, a plan.
That's what we're, I think if you make the plan.
And I think following this, we can, we can build towards that plan. I don't wanna ever ask for four cars or three cars again. It's just a lot.
And I think that will help the public understand why we're doing it differently. We are changing, and that you, we owe them an explanation. When I go look at the warrant article that's before me, it says a hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two hundred and sixty-two dollars and eighty cents in year one. And then I go down, it says two thousand and twenty-four, twenty-five, eighty-nine thousand, one twenty-nine point thirty. And I think we have two different figures.
Yeah, I can't answer that question.
Um, I think what it is, is that is the loan payment, and there's forty-nine thousand, one hundred and thirty-three dollars and fifty-six is the equipping, the car, because you can't ask for one hundred and thirty-eight thousand, two thousand and twenty-eight, and then down below say you're only gonna be working, asking for eighty-nine thousand, one twenty-nine thirty.
I, I, I can't, I, I don't understand. I, I don't understand.
He's nervous. He's got cops everywhere.
Yeah.
I, I, I'm not sure of that number either. Mark, you have an idea? Idea wide?
You, you got two, you can't have both numbers in the two for two thousand twenty-five.
Well, you could.
Unless that's supposed to be.
You could.
Unless the eighty-nine thousand is actually supposed to be twenty-six, twenty-seven, twenty-eight.
That's the other possibility, was something's not quite right there.
So I, 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 I kinda, it was a good conversa, at least for me, it was a good conversation. Um, I summarize in two areas. Number one is there a bona fide need for additional cruisers. I think more, more homework to be done there. Uh, and number two is what's the best financial profile picture approach for the town of Wolfboro? Um, and I think we, at least I come away from this conversation not having a clear answer on that. Financially, I don't know what the right answer is. Brian gave a very impassioned, uh, uh, you know, discounted cash flow analysis, which I may or may not accept, but I just don't know what's right for the town. And I think we need to know those two answers, and so I would, I would suggest we revisit this at some point.
We'll park it.
We'll park it.
Okay. Brian?
Yep.
Park it.
Park it.
Park it.
Park it. Well, park it, maybe you can get some stuff for us to get a better understanding, and I think what you're really looking is how you're gonna sell, sell this to the public, and how you're gonna make sense, and how you're, you're gonna tell them why you're changing and how you're changing, because they didn't vote for it last year. You gotta really sell where you're going this year and why you're doing it. And I, I, I think you're changing from this, which we gave them last year, and so they need, this isn't the way we're gonna do it, we're gonna do it this way.
Yeah, that asset management plan is important.
This was on.
Yeah, but the plan was given to them last year, and they voted down, so.
Why would we do this again? Because you're supposed to have one of those.
Yes, because you're doing something very different. You're not just placing it, and hopefully, you can get the full approval of the Budget Committee, and you've got a better shot if you get the full support of the Budget Committee.
Okay.
Okay? That's kind of my thought.
And, and I am for purchased leases, because as I said, if you look at the way, I mean, if you have a, a three to four percent escalation in the cost of a new vehicle every year, and that's standard in the industry, that, that kind of offsets some of your interest rate on the vehicle, because you're gonna pay three percent more on a ninety thousand dollar vehicle, or you're paying six percent interest on a ninety thousand dollar vehicle. So it.
I just need some clarification. Are, are we to come back with you with lease purchase information and an outright cash purchase item?
I think one member of the board is asking for an outright cash, yes. That's my understanding.
Selfishly, that would be my. Then we can have a conversation about cost of capital, a real conversation about that. Thank you.
And we get this warrant article straightened out in terms of funding.
Yeah.
So we're not asking.
We're.
It may be just changing the year, I, something's off.
And I, I would just make, I'm, I'm gonna make a bold statement.
Okay.
I do firmly believe that police vehicles are operating costs, and if we're doing this on an annual basis, I think there needs to be a conversation about whether or not it should be in the operating budget or not. Um, the trouble with that, I think, becomes the Police Detail Revolving Fund.
Yep.
And of course, getting it approved the first time.
Yep.
So, uh, okay, we've got that.
And we can look at it two different ways.
Correct.
That's a good take, Jim. That's right there.
Okay. Are we ready to move on to the cameras?
So your next item in front of you is, uh, police cameras. Uh, this is a project that, um, has hit this fall. Uh, the state of New Hampshire has a fifty percent grant opportunity, um, which the captain has applied for. It's my understanding that, uh, it, it's a performance grant, so once the, uh, cameras are purchased and in place, we'll get reimbursement on, of fifty percent for this. Um, I do support this project. I think it's not only an officer's safety, um, but a, a new officer management training tool, accountability to the citizens, um, for your Police Department. Captain, if you'll be able to speak to this item.
I can give you a little over, overlay on it before, um, the captain gets into the grant and the money piece, and it's more of the operating piece. Body cameras have been around for a while, and I, I think they, they started to gain a lot of traction in the state, um, around two thousand sixteen, seventeen, where towns and cities were starting to have this conversation, um, a lot of it fueled by events that were happening far away from us. Um, the problem, um, the problem with these, and I, I was front and center with a lot of the issues that were going on with body cameras, and, and towns and cities were fifty-fifty split on what they thought about them, or what their purpose was or is. Um, as far as I'm concerned, my own personal feeling, and I had this conversation with the captain shortly upon being sworn in, was, why aren't we, why don't we have body cameras? Um, I find that one of my main tenants in leading this agency is accountability. Um, number two is, um, being transparent, as transparent as at all possible. Um, those two things are, um, troubled with the lack of body cameras. They're there. Um, it makes, uh, police officers better at their job, makes them more confident that they're gonna be supported by the community. Um, I, it's a no, no bad things can happen, kind of a thing for the municipality. And it protects us, certainly liability-wise. Going back to two thousand seventeen, my department did not get body cameras, and there was a couple reasons why. Uh, the first reason was, the storage for the data was four times the expense of the cameras themselves. We were looking at buying a three-terabyte hard drive, which back then was really expensive. Now it's.
Buck and a half.
Uh, the two, um, I needed somebody that I could almost give a, almost a full-time job redacting materials that wasn't allowed to be given away in ninety-one A requests and these types of things. Um, it was very expensive. The state was still trying to figure out what they wanted to do with regard to our wiretapping law and, um, the other issues under five seventy dash A. Since that time, things have changed. Uh, storage is on the cloud. Um, the New Hampshire House passed a law that, um, takes body-worn cameras out of the ninety-one A forum, um, and has actually written the policy for the Police Departments in how to enforce their body-worn camera usage and dissemination. Um, it's a lot, it's, it's that, it's that thing. It's that new thing that everybody sees come out, and you're like, oh, that's sweet. We gotta have that. And the guy in the corner goes, eh, give it a couple years. That's what we did. That's what a lot of agencies did. I think it's time, and I asked the captain, I said, we gotta, we gotta get into this, these, these folks need body-worn cameras. We need to get into this grant. Uh, we called around, and, uh, leave it to, to Mark to, to explain that to you, what he found.
Take it away, Mark.
Take it away, Mark.
So the grant that I applied for, so it's up to fifty thousand on certain parts. So it covers the cameras, hardware, uh, some software, but it doesn't cover every software that comes with the cameras, um, redacting, transcribing. The technology has come a long way since we first looked at these, which answers a lot of your questions, probably down the road with personnel that we won't need because the technology is there. Um, it does the work for us, um, with the transcribe and the, uh, redacting of the software and the evidence for it. So you just plug it all in, it does the work for us a lot easier. Um, so that partly answers your question that I know that was coming, uh, based on our last Selectments meeting. Um, the grant will pay up to twenty, uh, up to fifty thousand, so we're looking at probably around, when I did apply for it, it's about twenty-six thousand and change that will come off of it, if, if approved. Um, we'll look at that. It goes into the state, and they will review that in January, so we'll have an answer. I'm assuming it's pretty quick when it comes back. I, I can't see why we wouldn't get that amount. Um, so that kind of covers the grant, what we're looking at, um, and the offset that hundred and eight, one ninety-six. That's what we're hoping for.
Linda?
Yep.
So, so my understanding from what I've just heard from you is, I know that in New Hampshire, it is illegal to record, um, either audio or video records somebody without their consent, but you're saying the State House is taking care of that and giving the officers the right? So you don't, with a body camera on, you don't have to tell each person you approach you are being videoed, or you are being, do you have to do that or not?
You, the, the statute, and you'll find it under New Hampshire RSA one oh five dash D, if you wanna look at it later.
Okay.
It does say that we have to tell them as soon as practicable.
Okay.
That they're being.
Thank you.
Yep.
So I'm, I, I, when you ask yourself, what is the kit that a sworn officer should have? One of them has to be something you wear on your hip, a radio, and I think the, uh, the twenty-first century version of things is, you probably need to record the encounter. So I look at this, and I say, this is kit. This is basic kit. And, uh, so I, I support, uh, what we need to do here. The, the questions of, you know, who, what do you do? Who's gonna do the back office stuff when you have a proceeding in a court? How do you go through all those files? I'll let, I'll let that up, let that get figured out by you guys, but this to me is part of the kit that we need to have for a safety officer and the public. Both people, both parties benefit from this, in my opinion. So that's kind of where I'm at.
Any comment from anybody else? You know, I'm with them. I think it's just a basic safety issue.
Yep.
For everybody around. Do I like having to spend this much money this year? No. But I, I think, I'm with Paul, it's just the time.
It's kit.
We really need to, to have it. Um, does anybody wanna make a motion?
I'll recommend, uh, that the Board of Selectmen approve the, uh, purchase of police body cameras.
Second.
I have a motion by Paul, second by Brian. Does anybody have any comments hearing? Oh.
Yeah, and, and we also have to remember that it is a lot of money, but we're getting fifty percent back, and this may.
Up to fifty.
Up to fifty. And this, another year, you might not get this. So it's, sometimes when the funding's available, you.
Yeah, I mean, this is, even if the funding wasn't available.
You'd do it.
I'd do it. I think that's what this is.
I'd do it. Even if the funding wasn't there, I'd do it. It's kit.
Linda?
Yes, Paul.
How, how many cameras are we talking? It doesn't say.
Sixteen. It should be on.
Says, says active officers. Doesn't give a number.
Um, sixteen.
Sixteen.
Would you like that added to it?
Well, I'm just saying, I think somebody should say, well, it's gonna cover sixteen officers. It'll absolutely be in the backup. If you'd like the number sixteen added to the, the item, we can do that, but. It says, just says active officers. I don't know how many that is.
I think we should put sixteen, so the public knows how many we're gonna have. That's a good catch, Dave.
The assumption is there's maintenance spares, 'cause you don't need sixteen cruisers. Uh, there's maintenance spares, right? So you, you basically have a, a twofer.
At, at full complement, the Royal Police Department has sixteen sworn officers.
Yeah.
Okay.
So you're buying them for.
They have to wear their own camera. They can't trade off.
They can't, they can't use their cell phone.
Like cruisers. 'Cause July fourth, we're all working, so.
Okay, um, let's see. Paul, you're okay adding sixteen?
Yep, yep, yep.
Brian, you seconded, are you okay adding the sixteen? Any other, uh, comments? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Who wants to make a motion to move to the warrant? Paul?
To the Budget Committee.
No. Where, ours is to put it on the warrant.
Oh, move to put it on the warrant, I'd move that we put on the warrant the purchase of police body cameras.
Second.
Okay.
Thank you.
Got the motion again from, from Paul, second by Brian. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Okay. And we don't have anything else for the next one, so we'll move on.
Yep, next one is police union contract. More forthcoming on that, nothing to speak of at this point.
Okay.
Uh, next item is.
Thank you.
Firebase ambulance service. Uh, the Ad-Hoc Committee came in front of you, uh, gosh, about a month ago now, um, and you as the Board of Selectmen endorsed moving the project forward for the Fire Department to, now I got two fire guys surrounding me. To, um, move this forward for a twenty-twenty-seven full transition to Fire Department-based ambulance service, at which time we will no longer have a contract with a, uh, private ambulance provider. Uh, warrant article includes hiring a deputy chief who's also a paramedic, excuse me, effective, uh, April one, twenty-twenty-five. Hire three additional firefighter EMS personnel. Effective July one, twenty-twenty-five. Operating expenses for those, uh, four individuals. Uh, purchasing of a vehicle for the deputy chief as an intercept vehicle, uh, seventy-five thousand, uh, and fully equipped used ambulance at the cost of two ninety-four. Uh, so that all adds up to eight hundred and sixteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-three dollars, as brought forward by the Ad-Hoc Committee. Uh, outlines what the plan for twenty-twenty-six and twenty-twenty-seven are. Uh, estimated tax rate impact for twenty-twenty-five is thirty cents per thousand. Um, we have sent this to DRA for review. We have not heard back from them. We kind of mirrored this to how we did the adding of a truck and a person in the Highway Department a few years back.
No comment?
So here we are.
Here we are. We've heard a lot about this, and, uh, I guess it's, um, before us and where we wanna go. Um, you know, I've looked at it, it, it does mean that we're putting out, um, about, um, one point five million or one point three million by the time you pay for this and you have it in the operating budget, which is a lot to stomach. Um, and I would have loved to have it go over three years, but we, at MRI, they talked about two years. The Ad-Hoc Committee came and studied it, they talked about two years. I wasn't on that committee. I've got it feel like I've gotta take the recommendation of those people who spent a lot of time, um, studying it. We're going to have to do a lot of PR in trying to sell this to the public. It is a big nut. Um, I didn't see anything. I didn't see anything that they're asking to purchase or the number of staff. It seems like it was well thought out. It does, by the time we get to 2017, the price will go, 2027, the price will go down. So we've got to kind of look to the future for that. So those are my comments. Brian?
The, one thing I can say is, some of the quotes that we received, if, say, Stewarts were to leave us, were 1.2, 1.3 million dollars for the same service that we have now, if we were using an outside provider. So the 1.3 isn't all that bad. It's not good. But also, we know that 70% of the state of New Hampshire uses their own fire-based system or they contract with a town next door to them that has a fire-based system. So I want people to understand, we're not reinventing the wheel. It's what's happening in the state of New Hampshire, it's what's happening in the country. It gives us a very stable emergency response system going forward that is run by our police department, that are our neighbors and our community, and gives us stability going forward years down the road. And I believe, looking at the numbers, that we will have a five-year breakeven. So it's gonna be a little bit of an expense in the beginning, but it is going to have stability and financial stability going forward. And I support the plan and the warrant.
Okay. Paul?
Did you have, did you put your hand up there? No. So Brian, you know, adequately provided what I think is an essential part of the sales pitch, and that's good. So rhetorical question. So we just had a thrashing session with your colleagues across the hall about why they want to lease things, but you want to go buy something. And that's not, I'm not asking you to solve that problem. It's a question I have, though. Operationally, we, this thing makes a lot of sense. By the way, operationally, it makes a lot of sense to have police cruisers. What I don't understand is the financial impact, and I really do want to understand why we, on one hand, say we want to buy a car, and on the other hand, we want to lease cars. That's not for you guys. That's just my nonspecific whining about the, what I consider to be incongruity. Did we get something back from MRI? Did we get the final report in?
Not yet. And I would just add one item to your lease topic. When we purchased the fire truck a couple of years back. We purchased that under a lease purchase program because we had an opportunity to purchase a fire truck, which was approved by a community, and then they were hit with a surcharge and they decided to back out. That fire truck was sitting there. We were two years away from replacement of a fire truck, and we had an opportunity to buy a truck for about $800,000, which today probably would be closer to 950,000, a million. So there was, there was a benefit associated with that particular lease at that time. Going forward with this project, I'm pretty sure that both proposals recommended purchasing outright, and that's why you see them in front of you.
Stipulated, yeah, exactly. And by the way, Jim just did a great job explaining the good reason to enter into a lease, because it was financial justification. I'm just having this incongruity, which we'll deal with later. The question, though, is, and I was on the ad hoc committee, so I kind of support the living bejesus out of this thing, because I don't think we have much of a choice. I mean, that's kind of where I come out. We don't have a, it's a terrible thing to say that we're at the coalface, but it doesn't appear like we have much of a choice. So I depend upon, you know, maybe the chief and the deputy to kind of, you know, walk us through briefly, how this is gonna, how are you gonna put wheels on this thing, beginning once the, once the voters hopefully approve this? Could you kind of walk us through that, maybe a couple of questions would come after that? Because I would have a couple of questions after that.
Sure. And I will point out that Dr. Stolarsky is here with us. He's the chair of the ad hoc committee. So if you have a question specific to the committee, I'm sure he'd be happy to answer. Our intent would be, if we move forward with this and obtain all the approvals in March, between now and then, we would outline the specific process for the hiring of the EMS deputy chief, so we could hit the ground running as soon as the March vote happened and we obtain the approval. Once we get to that point, we obviously, again, start that process. We will also, with a little bit less time pressure, start the advertising and collating of job descriptions and so forth for the potential hires in mid-year. Our existing truck committee, actually, I'll call it a subcommittee of the truck committee, is, as we speak, reviewing vendors and so forth, with a look, with an eye toward the availability of a used ambulance and the timeframe involved in that and so forth. So they're actively doing that to be ready to move once the vote happens. And we would, the quote for the vehicle for the deputy chief of EMS is based on the state bid price, so presumably, we could move forward fairly quickly after approval with that and any outfit and so forth. So once we get to that point, I think, you know, a lot of things are gonna happen. My goal would be to, once the deputy chief of EMS is on board, to start working to develop some other specific policy recommendations to you folks in terms of how we approach the billing. And my recommendation would be to go present an RFP for a billing agency to take care of the billing and so forth. We would also recommend to you various policies in how aggressive the town wants to be in collecting that billing. We could run the gamut from anywhere, from accepting whatever Medicare and private insurance pays and that's it. Or theoretically come going as far as pursuing, you know, going to collection if somebody doesn't pay some or all of the bill. There is legislation at the state level that's working through the system that will address things like balance billing, which is insurance pays for X amount and the balance we send the bill for. That may become a moot point if some of the legislation passes. Because it also would develop a rate that would cover more of the actual cost of the service, rather than having people, you know, the insurance cover a certain amount and then the town or the municipality going after the customer. So we've got to kind of monitor that as it goes along. But, you know, once, if this is approved, a lot of things are gonna happen in a fairly quick period of time. I would defer to the deputy to see if I maybe missed anything big, but our intent is to have the groundwork laid so that upon approval, we can hit the ground running and start to put the pieces in place to make this happen in the timeframe we've indicated.
And I could be wrong, but I think that the reason that we're purchasing this is it's a used ambulance, and I think a lease purchase.
You'd be hard-pressed to find a company willing to lease a used vehicle.
Correct. And the new ambulance that we've purchased down the road in this plan could be a lease purchase if we choose, and it is financially in the best interest of the town.
Right. I think this is, this is the recommendation the ad hoc committee came up with. It's similar to the recommendation MRI came up with. But in the end, you mean, I think, and I don't mean to sound like I'm passing the buck, but the financing end of it is maybe above our pay grade. It would involve you guys to decide what makes the most sense.
Bingo.
In the bigger picture of the town government and whatever, everything else that's going on. I would agree with the statements they made earlier. The big financial lift here is primarily in the first two years because of the capital costs involved. And if there's a smarter decision to be made in terms of some sort of leasing arrangement, we're certainly open to that. I can tell you that I'm currently working on a federal grant, which, if it, if we're successful, and the timing works out to the point where it would pay for the new ambulance we would request in 2026, at the tune of 95% federal money, so it would be 5 cents on the dollar. We've put together the spec, a general spec in terms of the equipment we need. I'm in the process of tweaking the narrative. We do have somebody reviewing it for us to kind of offer some input. It's due next Friday, so I'm hoping by about Wednesday afternoon or Thursday to be in a position to read it one more time and hit the send button. The timing of that is such that if it's awarded, we would be notified somewhere after May 1st and probably Labor Day or so. And then the performance period of the grant carries over nicely to a potential March 2026 vote for the gross appropriation offset by the 95% grant. Obviously, you can't make any promises, but it's a compelling narrative, I think. And we'll see. Obviously, we will pursue anything along those lines that we can find that fits the criteria.
Dave?
I think that Tom struck the part of this. This service is gonna produce revenue to offset the expenses. What that is, we don't know. That's kind of a question mark. But you gotta remember, this is gonna produce revenue to offset expenses. We don't know how much, and we know that the service, from what we've seen, at least what I've seen, you bill so much, you only get so much. So that, to me, is up in the air, but this will produce revenue. Probably not gonna cover everything.
No.
But it's gonna produce revenues to offset expenses, which most of our departments don't do.
I think if you, if you review the ad hoc report and the MRI report, we do make some educated guesses on what that revenue will be. But part of the global, if you will, problem that we're trying to resolve here with many private services changing their mode of operation and/or closing their doors, is because the reimbursements are constantly changing. Why I think the committee tried to do was show you, and by extension to taxpayers, of a worst-case scenario, not to completely disregard revenue, but if people are comfortable with the numbers that we're showing being competitive to a private service based on an RFP, regardless of the revenue, any revenue we have is bonus, frankly.
But that's, that's what I'm saying.
But it does, correct, it does produce a revenue figure.
It doesn't say that in this warrant article.
That's true.
And I think you may want to put some verbiage in here that some of this will, not all, because we know it's not all, but some of this will be offset by, you know, Medicare, Medicaid, whatever billing of, billing to the customer. I think that that needs to be put in here, because otherwise, people are gonna say, hey, it's gonna cost us this much money. That's a lot of money. But we have revenue coming in to offset some, not all. But there should be, I think, something in here that states that we will be getting some revenue as ambulance services basically have done over the past. But it's not in here.
Brian?
My only suggestion.
Yeah, and Dave took the words right out of my mouth. I was gonna suggest the same thing that we should say, and any offsetting revenue received by the town for services. And I wanted to also just reiterate, so that the public knows, the purchase of this used ambulance is not the same as the purchase of the cruisers. Those are completely two different animals. Yeah, it's buying something that rolls on wheels, but it's completely different.
Paul?
My turn. Thanks for this, Tom, and chief deputy. So, yeah, you're right. The purchase of a used ambulance has nothing to do with the purchase of a cruiser, but the purchase of a vehicle for the deputy does. That's my issue on that. Anyway, I think the offsetting revenue discussion is important, but again, my, I'll support you, Dave. My personal opinion is never fix a business plan by plugging a revenue number. It's a guarantee you're gonna get in trouble for doing that. So I have two questions for, one for us and one for the chief. And the question for the chief is, and this is, you know, this is one thing I think we touched upon during the ad hoc committee. The turnover rate for EMTs in our state is pretty high. And, you know, how do you, what's your theory about how you're gonna ensure that we don't have a turnover rate, or if we do, we have a replacement, more importantly, right? You want to have a fully, full team showing up. What are you gonna do differently or acceleratedly, if that's the right word, to make sure that we don't, we don't come, come sitting in front of each other and saying, we ain't got enough people?
Well, I think the primary thing, as we've discussed in the past, is Wolfboro can be an attractive place to be. We're about to move into a brand-new facility. We're contemplating this program, and somebody who wants to be able to contribute from the ground floor has a great opportunity. Number three, I think we need to make sure when we talk about that turnover rate, we're comparing apples and apples. Because frankly, I don't know that it compares 100% to what a private provider might consider their turnover rate, because they are EMTs and advanced EMTs and paramedics. They're not firefighter EMTs and paramedics. And I think you'll find in the fire service, the turnover rate is somewhat less than what some of the private companies. It's a similar job, it's not the same job.
So I'll just follow up by saying, a sentence would be, my objective is to ensure that we have 100% of staff available to go minister to people, and then you have to have a program to get that done.
Right.
It would be, can I do the second question? Come on.
Well, you know.
I said I had two questions.
You could wait with your second question.
All right, I'll wait.
Because I think other people get a chance.
All right, I'll wait.
One of my, and I understand what Dave was saying about revenues, but I do not believe in 2025, we're going to be running an ambulance that's gonna generate any significant. We may be a second ambulance out for a small period of time, so I don't think in that year. When we talk about 2026 and then 2027, that is.
I tend to agree with that. If you look at the timeframe we've laid out, yes, the, all things being equal, we would begin a lower level of transport service, just to use the number, say, November 1st of next year, as the second ambulance. With the known lag time between billing and receivables and the number of actual incidents where we would perform a transport in a two-month period, I would say it'd be negligible to possibly zero by the time the billing catches up with the calls and so forth. In '26, and obviously going forward into '27, yes, there, that's when we start to see the revenue.
So then when I look at this warrant article, and we've got the stuff for 2025, I would want changes if we keep 2026 and 2027 in the warrant article itself. I think they would, we need to make sure we have all the amounts in for 2026 and 2027 and put what the total amount is going to be, opposed to just saying this for personnel. And I question, do we want to put those other two years in the warrant article?
That was gonna be my question.
I kind of go back and forth. One, we're being very transparent, and then, two, are we confusing people?
Well, that was gonna be my question.
Well, you have to wait for me first. So those are mine, and I believe, Brian, and then you can answer your second one.
Yeah. Well, he doesn't have to now.
I'm gonna.
So what is our current turnover rate in our fire department?
I don't know if I can actually quote a number.
I can.
It's not huge.
We've promoted one within, out of the floor in eight years, and in eight years, we've rolled over two employees. Period.
So that shows firefighters, that shows for Paul that firefighters stay, EMTs don't stay in their profession, because they go on to become.
Sometimes they come on to fire.
Firefighters.
Yeah. You know, that's always a possibility, but I think. You know, that's always a possibility, but I think, again, I'm talking anecdotally. Jim obviously has harder numbers. We don't see a huge turnover. We have had some career staff turnover over the course of my career, obviously retirements, people moving on and so forth. But I, it's not anything I would consider high. Obviously, as we take on, if we create new positions and so forth, you know, it, again, will become a regular occurrence to fill open positions and that sort of thing. It's not a secret that I think the department, as it sits today, tends to be people with 20, 25, 30, 35 years of service and people with four, five, six, eight years of service and not a lot in between. So that's one of the things we are trying to address as a department currently in terms of succession planning and things like that because conceivably, you know, a number of people could decide to retire in a, over a span of a couple of years. And we want to make sure we have a plan in place to fill those positions with capable people who are familiar with our operations and can, and hit the ground running.
And to be preemptive with the question, if we include the numbers for going forward into this warrant article for future years, those numbers could change.
Presumably, when, for example, the union contract is settled, some of the salary numbers will adjust and some of the benefit numbers may adjust.
So do we want to put numbers in that might not...
That's a question.
We had a meeting, what, two weeks ago now, Jim, myself, Sam, and Casey, talking about this very thing. There's also a question, and I believe, I don't want to step on any toes, why, part of the reason this is being reviewed by DRA is, how much language do you put in there that addresses the out-years and then, does that commit you to those numbers in the out-years? Does that have an impact on a potential future default budget number? That's what we're kind of struggling with, I think, and that's part of the reason it's being reviewed all up and down the chain.
Paul?
I was taking a short nap. Well, everybody.
I'm glad you woke up.
So I, my issue on turnover is really simple. I'm looking at data that says it's a big number in the state. You would be great to hear you say, our objective is to have 100% availability, what, pick a number, 100% availability of EMTs, and then you have to figure out with your colleague how you build a program to get that done. That's my only issue.
Sure.
Okay?
Can I quote you one? That's your only issue.
Well, that's the only issue, it's really the turnover rate. They're on to me, Brian.
There is no turnover.
The second, the second one, which really, I think Linda preempted me and Brian did too, so I'm just going to, I'm just going to put it to you this way. My view is fund the entire thing now because if you, if you don't, somebody next year may raise their hand and say, I thought I already paid for that. And you could get into a whimmy-whammy with, you know, with crazy voters like myself. And by the way, the second year, 2026, is, you have to have the 2026 funding in order for you to complete the plan. So it's not as if it's optional. We're in for 2025 tranche one, we're in for 2026 tranche two. So it's not optional that 2026 could just go away. We say, well, we changed our mind. We're in. So my, my thing here is fund it all. Manage the living bajonkers out of it, but fund the whole bloody thing and tell the voters that's how it's going to come out.
There's certainly a case to be made that that's somewhat advantageous. We have struggled a little bit, like I said, with how much do we include in the out-years to be transparent with the idea that we don't want people approving this in 2025 and thinking it's done and move on. Wait a minute, in 2026 is a whole nother article, wait a minute, we already did this.
I could, I could get talked out of, unless somebody legally says we can't get talked out of this, I could get talked out of the incrementing of headcount in 2026, but I would have a hard time agreeing that we should say, well, we'll just wait till next year to ask them for another $500,000 for an ambulance. You need two ambulances to run this operation in this town. You can't, it's not, it's not a choice. So I say fund it all and be done with it. And then we have to get Brian out there to do his, do his, all of us, we have to go out there and do our magic to let people understand that this is the right thing to do for the town.
And I would also indicate, we have not disbanded the ad hoc committee, and the intent is that presuming you move this forward in this form or something similar, we would then be in a position to start discussing it with civic groups and the members of the committee will be helping us with that. So we understand that, you know, however this is going to look is the way we want to be able to go out and say, here's what you're going to be seeing in March and here's what it's going to do.
Right.
Brad?
I think when we look at the presentation here on the fire base ambulance service, I think we all know we're headed that direction. We have, you know, the work that MRI did and the ad hoc committee did was tremendous. The presentation was tremendous, and they looked at every avenue option within the plan and everything there, came up with a very solid plan here. So, I mean, I do support that and, you know, in favor of that. If you take that away, sitting on its own, I think it's a no-brainer, gets, you know, goes through and everything. The problem that we have sitting here at the board here is we have this whole list in front of us with $4.4 million in there that we have to make some choices on. So that being said, as much as I do support this and in favor of this, I still, I believe we need to keep this on our list to look at along with a lot of these other ones as we evaluate what we're going to do here and stuff. I just wanted to put that out there, you know.
Yep.
As much as I hate to.
You want to put it on hold.
We have to put it on the whole hold list.
Linda?
I have one question. Am I correct? After the first year, we would be fully equipped and ready to go and be the second ambulance? It doesn't require us to have the next year?
Short answer, yes. If this was approved, that would put us in a position by the end of '25 to be able to run one ambulance going forward. If, and we've, not to be negative, but we'd remiss if we didn't at least role-play some of these scenarios in our heads. For example, if this was approved, we move forward and the package in 2026 didn't pass, we'd obviously have to come to you with an updated plan, but that plan could consist of us running perhaps the primary ambulance with the staff that's been provided at that point, and we'd still have to contract for a backup of some sort.
I just want to make, what I'm trying to get at is that we are in a position to start operating an ambulance after this first payment. We prefer to follow the full plan out. But it's not like we're there and we're missing some people in order to even run an ambulance.
No, the intent would be by the end of '25, we would run with a minimum of four people on duty 24/7 and run, at least in theory at this point, the backup ambulance.
Brian?
So there is a, there is a chance, I've also heard, that we could get some funding for personnel?
Yes.
There is a grant program that addresses personnel, is not, the application period is not open yet. We will certainly pursue that once it is opened and they publish the notice of funding opportunity, which spells out the priorities of the program and that sort of thing. Again, we will certainly pursue any and all grant opportunities to help offset some of this. We understand, this is a heavy lift, we know that. And anything we can do to offset some of that impact to the taxpayers, we certainly will pursue. Again, it's a grant program, they're competitive, we can't make promises, but we'd be remiss if we didn't at least attempt to apply.
And I have a follow-up for personnel, is that if we funded both ambulances, but then in 2026, we need three additional personnel, and the voters voted that down, then we have an ambulance sitting here for $500,000 that we're not using. So I think that the ad hoc committee did a great job, MRI did a great job, setting this up and having it go in pieces. And the worst-case scenario, we get one ambulance and we become the number-one provider, and then we have a backup from a company, is an okay situation if that's the worst-case scenario. I believe that we need to go to a full service from our fire department, as everybody who understands this has said, MRI, the ad hoc committee, our fire department, the state of New Hampshire, everybody has said this is the way we need to do it.
I think the, you have to remember, the overriding consideration here is we need to provide this service in some way, shape, or form to the residents and taxpayers and visitors of Wolfboro. So we've tried to approach this in a manner that provides a similar or better level of service than we see today in a competitive financial manner. Granted, the first two years are quite heavy in terms of acquiring the capital, equipment, and so forth. But at the end of the day, we will come out with a situation where we have two ambulances. If something goes sideways and only one of them is staffed municipally and we contract for the second one to make sure we provide that level of service, that's what we would have to approach you to do.
I want to say one thing. I think what we need to talk about, the MRI report, and the MRI report asked us in the first year to purchase the ambulances, apply for that grant to get the employees, and then we would know where we are. The problem there is you have two ambulances sitting with no apply. So that's why what the committee came up with made way more sense to me and why I went to that. And so I think the public needs to know why we went to this other plan.
And certainly not to denigrate the work that MRI did, but going a little deeper into that, one of the concerns from my perspective would be, if we followed their plan, we would do that, we'd buy two ambulances and essentially park them for a period of time, and then in the midsummer, hire the MS deputy and a daytime firefighter, and then once they're onboarded sometime in the fall, we would run, according to their plan, the backup ambulance with the deputy chief and the daytime firefighter providing the staffing for that ambulance during the day. Keep in mind, our existing contract with Stewarts allows us to renegotiate downward what we pay them. When we get to the point of being able to run one of the ambulances, how do we do that? They would have to run both of their ambulances after 5:00 PM every day. There's no budget in the MRI plan for backfilling that deputy or that daytime firefighter if one of them needs a day off or is sick or something. That's kind of why we lean towards what we came up with, because once we do it, it's in place and it goes. I, you know, I can't speak for Stewarts, but I can't imagine they would be willing to give us a break on the fee if they're still running the ambulance 12 hours a day. And then, oh, it's Tuesday, somebody banged out sick, you got to run it today. How do you do that? It would have to, it wouldn't save us any money on that end, which again, goes to that impact on the taxpayers.
Okay, board members, Paul, do you have something else?
Yeah, I'm confused. The effort that we put together started with a premise that said that, you know, we need to be in the business, fully functioned, fully staffed. Two tranches, used ambulance, new ambulance, headcount plan was developed. We also convinced ourselves that Stewarts is getting out of the business. We've said that more than 154 times. No disrespect, but to suggest that maybe they're not getting out of the business and maybe we could just limp along with one ambulance next year, I think is a big left turn. And so I'm with Brad. We park it and we take a look at it and answer the question whether that second tranche of firefighters and ambulance is viable or not viable. So I'm with Brad, I just think we park it. I'm, I, big left turn for me. That's a big on what we did, so I think we park it.
Thank you. Brian?
I understand Paul's confused, but I don't understand why he's confused because he sat on the ad hoc committee for 17 weeks. So, and this was all discussed and it was all taken care of, so I don't know where Paul is, but...
That's good you don't know.
But regardless, I agree that we should park it, but not for a financial reason and not because this is not a good approach, but only because I heard from Tom Zodi that it's going to DRA right now and they're looking at it and they're reviewing how the wording is on this.
I believe that's the case.
Yeah, and all articles. We just, we were looking for guidance because I wanted to functionally be able to fund this in a two-year proposal under a single warrant article. And I don't know if we legally can do that or not. We can with a collective bargaining agreement, but I don't know if we can do that for capital costs. So that's why it went in front of DRA for some help to say, guide us here because this is a convoluted and complicated article to get to the finish line, no matter how you do it, if you break it out, if you do it as one, so...
So once we have that guidance, then we can make a better decision on it. So that's the reason why I would park it, just for DRA guidance.
I agree with you.
I, you know, my concern here is that if we put it all in one warrant article, its cost and impact, and I think we have a less of a chance to get it through. And I think that the reality is, I'm hoping if they vote the first one in, they'll vote the second one, but if for some reason they didn't, we have, we could still function. I'm not making a turn, I'm just pointing out that that is a complete package for one ambulance. That's what that $816,000 plus. So I just wanted to make sure, because when we go out to the public, we're going to have to explain all this, and we're going to have to be very clear, and somebody's going to come up and ask, well, will that, if we just did this one? We need to be able to answer that, so. We've got, Brian wants to pack it, Paul wants to park it, Brad wants to park it, Dave, okay parking it, and I'm okay parking it, so it's parked.
It's parked.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. Your next article is town road upgrades, $900,000 for 2025, estimated at 36 cents per thousand. Steve will be able to speak to what his proposal for work is for 2025, and I think this is an article that you could probably push forward if you so desired.
Thank you, Steve.
It's our annual road upgrade. Steve, you have provided us with some material, do you want to kind of go through this?
Sure can. Steve Randall, Department of Public Works. So we've been taking the approach of the, roughly the $1.1 million each year into our roads, and since I've been here, we've kind of split that up to a standalone project to incorporate some other utility work, whether it be water sewer. So you'll see that down at the bottom of your sheet for River Street. That's a $350,000 project, overall $200,000 coming from the highway department or the road budget. And then the other $900,000 for a various list of roads and, in next year's case, a couple of the town parking lots that are much-needed repair. I can start down with a list. So the municipal parking lot down by Linda's Flowers, we need to redo that one, the two here, front and rear. And then the entrance of Union Street that goes from South Main to down by the Hearing Center where that divider is by School Street, that will all get redone, overlaid. Center where that divider is by School Street, that will all get redone, overlaid. And then back in 2022, we did the Maplewood subdivision project, and that only has binder on it. So we need to put the top on. Now we're going to be going through our third winter on some of those. So it is due definitely time. So that would be Partridge, Maplewood, Berrywood, Jiminy, Deer Run, and Chipmunk Drive will all get their top finished coat. Then we'll move down to Sewell Road. So there's a couple of sections on Sewell Road that need to be reclaimed and reprofiled and built up. So those will get done with new binder on and then some other shims along Sewell Road. Point Sewell needs to be reclaimed, regrabbled, and base paved. And then we're going to do some sealing on King's Highway. That's to do, that's starting to show some cracks and some age. So I want to do some start to do some pavement preservation on some of our better roads so that we can keep them. And then we have our annual dirt roads that need continual love. So next year, we have Calpa Road that was on this year's plan that we didn't get to it when we had some flooding issues, and then Beach Pond. So that is our overall scope for next year.
And just to be very clear, Chipmunk Drive has nothing to do with Chipmunk Hollow's petition, just to be very clear.
Correct.
Brad, and then Dave.
Yeah, Steve, quick question for you. On Sewell Road, the reclaimed section base, is it a a complete section of that or you've got just little pieces within Sewell Road?
So there there's roughly two sections of it, and one right by Sewell Woods. We did, if anybody's traveled, we did a quick patch job for just for this winter. But that that in there needs to be reclaimed, and the road is actually quite low through there. The gravel base is non-existent. So we want to get that up, get that out of the swamp, for lack of a better word, and get that. And then if you go past the boatyard, that sharp corner, down the hill, back up again, there's another piece of that that's starting to break apart that's in rough shape. So those two sections need to be reclaimed and regrabbled for base, and then the rest of it, and then we'll be fine to shim. And then, just for conversation, in '26, planning to overlay that whole road, top the whole road.
Dave?
Yeah, I'm assuming that you mean King's Highway, that you mean Middleton Road?
Yes.
Because King's Highway is in the dorm.
Yes.
So you might want to change.
Middleton Road.
Paul?
Thank you. So when you do Chipmunk, so that basically that basically gives you a almost a complete portfolio up there. Berrywood and all those have all been cleaned up. So you'll you'll have that part of the town is going to be pretty buffed up. Everything underneath the road is in good shape now?
Yep, that was all rebuilt back in '22 and '23.
So that's good. So we you could check that box to say that part of the town is a check.
Correct.
You know, we're done. You're going to have to go to the planning board, obviously, for is it, you have to go for Sewell, do you have to go for Point Sewell as well?
No, only for trees, for the trees, and we're actually for trees and stone walls, but we're that's not really the issue for us.
This somehow is going to find its way back, these this bill of materials, which I appreciate you doing. And I don't know whether we want to put this out in the warrant or have it as a sidebar, but this this list of of activities somehow finds its way back to the Road Service Management Plan? Kind of, sort of?
Yes and no. Obviously, the the top coats listed for the Maplewood subdivision, you're not going to find in there, because that was that was done. So once that trigger is pulled on those roads, they have to be topped, or we're going to lose them. The other ones, yes.
It would be important, I think it's important to let the voters know that we spent all that money for a Road Service Management Plan. We said it was about a million bucks or whatever it is, just to keep our nose above water.
Yes.
And, you know, we we kind of got a little off track for whatever reason, snow, weather, the world, what, but now we're finding a path back so that voters can predictably understand if they if they want to look it up where we are.
Correct. Yeah, those are all in there along with River Street.
One deviation is the municipal parking lots. Those aren't on a management plan, but I think if you go into either one of those parking lots, you will see that we are way overdue for doing something. And I asked Steve to try and tie some project to the correcting of these two parking lots.
I have a question in terms of when we do a road, what happens and how do we account for the water line? And I think Chris knows, there's an interesting happening on Pleasant Valley Road, trying to find where that water line was and how deep it is. So as we hit those roads, will we move those water lines up or just note that you're going down that far?
So we're not going to we're not going to raise the water mains up. We're going to replace them if they need to be replaced. So and I think I think there's two parts to that question. One, we're not going to pave a road unless the water main is either, number one, replaced or two, within its life cycle. And the second one is the valve boxes, which is where we had a problem on Pleasant Valley Road, is finding those. Those didn't get either identified or raised the last time around. So those we will raise and make sure that we have access to them, because when we were out there last week, we could not find that valve. So that's a yeah. The mains, we're not going to go back and raise the mains up six, eight, 10 inches, obviously, but the valve boxes, so we can have access to the valves, yes.
Yeah, but my understanding, that water line is way down there, that we kind of put a a black top and then we built on top of it.
We did, but it's not that deep. It was.
Okay, that's what I heard.
It was maybe seven feet, but it's not cost-effective to raise the main. Now, when that main goes to get replaced, which we have conflicting dates on that main, which is there's two reasons why, I'm going to take the the opportunity to address this because we've had a few phone calls. There's two reasons why that section of Pleasant Valley Road didn't get done. Number one was we were waiting for some drainage proposals for the Rust Pond Association, what came through, what we the discussions, what were going to happen, not happen. So we didn't do anything with that. Number two is the actual age of that main, what it is and how good a shape it is. Because what I don't want to do.
Is zip the road.
Correct. Now, if it's a matter of a shim coat to make it so people can travel on it so we can punt for a few years, no problem. We did that on Bay Street last year. Skim coat, just to make it so people can get through the potholes, that's fine. But the full road rebuilds, we're not going to do it unless we the main is within good shape.
And isn't that going to change when we do the Route 28 project? They're going to turn it so, you know, it did make sense that we would that that was the other reason, at least that was what I was telling people, that that whole area is going to change.
Right. Yes.
Yes.
So so just just for clarity, so Pleasant Valley Road has a pretty substantial amount of blacktop, new stuff that's put down. No way, shape, and form are we thinking of zipping the road in the next five years?
I don't have any intention. So that has all new drainage. The water main stops at Camp School, so from there down is nothing. So that's got a new bridge.
That's a different discussion.
Right, that has a new bridge.
Got it.
New road base, new culverts, new drainage, new everything.
Okay.
It's just the upper end from Crossroads.
From Crossroads back to the school.
Where this is issued. Yes, absolutely.
Might be a little information on that water line, Steve. I'm not sure where it started, but in the mid to late 80s, there was a two-inch main line that went down Pleasant Valley Road. Started somewhere around where you guys had the leak there, I can't remember just where it was. And we replaced that with a with a six-inch ducted iron pipe down through there. So that give you an age roughly in that range there, what, 40 years or so, right through there. I don't remember how far up that came. I saw where you guys were working there, and I that doesn't ring a bell with me to where we started it.
I mean, back in '22, we took it from Crossroads to Camp School with brand-new DI. So we know that that section is good. So it's just that it's from where it turns on to to Crossroads is where the questioning is?
That's where we ended, we ended at Crossroads, so just want to give that a little bit of a thought.
Appreciate that.
Paul. So if if Pleasant Valley Road isn't on this, why are we even discussing it?
I discussed it in terms of the water main and asking Steve about, because you're going to go down Sewell Road, which would have a water main. I was asking a question about what we did with the water mains when we redid a road, and so you didn't get them way down. That was my question, that's what brought it up. And then we got sidetracked onto Pleasant Valley.
Because we don't want people to get confused, thinking that we're doing Pleasant Valley Road when it's not on this.
It's not going to be part of anything that came out. It was a question related to water. Okay.
Just as a fun fact, and you probably might have this in your pocket, if you add up the route miles, forget about the parking lots, if you add up the road miles that you're going to be working on next year, wouldn't it be fun to know that many miles as a percentage of the total road miles we have in the town? You could say, you know, hopefully, barring force majeure, at the end of 2025, this many miles as a percent of total paved miles in the town will have been dealt with.
Yep, I can do that.
Park that if you want it, you know, but that would be a fun fact to have for people. Might be a fun fact.
Any other comments, questions on the road upgrades? Is anybody comfortable making a motion that we recommend?
Make a motion to recommend the town road upgrades, warrant article for, what's the dollar value?
$900,000.
$900,000.
Second.
And okay, I've got a motion by Brian, a second by Paul. Any further discussion?
Question.
Okay.
Is this enough? So it's an interesting question, Paul, because I could say it's never enough, but there is also the logistics of us being able to support this work. Obviously, we don't do the paving, though we do take care of the drainage and the other things that go with it. I'm very comfortable with this number based on what we have and the amount of work that we have to do in town, period. If we had roads that just needed overlays, that we could sub it all out 100%, then I'd say, sure, give me another million. But that's not really the case. We have a lot of support that we have to do on these to make it work. And I think this is a good number all the way around for us to continue to chunk away at what we have to do in town.
Thank you.
All right, Brian?
And I I thank you, Steve, because we're in a tough budget season, and every dollar is going to be important, and to be prudent with $900,000 and not ask for more over and over again is a great thing.
I don't want to give it back.
Any other comments?
I would just add, he is asking for more, but it's in a hybrid warrant article for River Street that gets us to our $1.1 million of annual road work.
But we've done that before, where we have that and we have another. That's kind of where I hit that.
Green Street, High End, whatever other street is.
Yeah, we did it for Park.
This is a normal practice.
Yep, okay. So any, Brian?
In the last, the first year I was on the board, it was $1.1 million that I asked Dave Ford about, and that was four years ago. So you've kept your your dollar value flat and level.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of recommending? Aye. Do I have a motion to move to the warrant?
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, I've got Brian made the motion, Brad seconded it. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor? Aye. All right, Steve, we're on to the next.
Next article is South Main Street, Complete Street Engineering. I think Steve's got some news on this one.
We're going to table this or push it to at least next year. So as some of you are aware, we did get preliminary approval on grant funding for this project. And if we if we were to expend the $300,000 now, we can't get reimbursed for it. So based on the proposed schedule for one, for the grant, and two, for just actually doing it, I feel comfortable with waiting another year. Hopefully, we get the grant in place, and then all of that will be reimbursed still.
You don't need a motion after that?
Withdrawal, I guess.
I think we probably do need a motion. Somebody make a motion to remove this warrant article?
Second.
Okay, I made it. Paul seconded it. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. All righty.
Thanks, Steve.
Let's go on to, we've got now Capital Reserve.
So this is a normal Capital Reserve appropriation, $380,000. Steve will be able to speak to this.
So in the packet that I gave you on the second page is my standard 10-year forecast for the Public Works replacement. And I would like to say it is for the Public Works Department, not just the Highway Department. So that covers everything at the Highway Department, the Solid Waste Department, the Municipal Garage, and our Builders and Grounds Department. So you have the equipment ask, year, truck numbers, what we're doing, what their costs are, what I'm asking for funding, what I'm going to spend that year, and then the balance in each year in the further right column. So you'll see that how we carry the amount that we're going to carry from year to year to make sure as we get further down, we have a couple spikes in years, 31, 2026 and 3031, we're spending well over half a million. When I put this together was to try to keep somewhat level funding over the next decade. I will say this is in $2025, because I updated it beginning of the week to to what I'm going to be, what the stuff would be next year. So this is my master sheet. In discussions with Jim and some of the other things, knowing where we are in the budget cycle, I threw in a couple little options in the following pages with what it would look like if we did something other than what I asked for. An option of doing nothing and just push the whole table a year, skip 2025 completely and just reset it again in '26. Essentially, it looks the same. We just skip a year. We have a straight $100,000 this year given and nothing expended, so that we basically push the vehicles a year. That $100,000, I take and spread it out over the next couple of years into the fund to keep the asks down a little longer before they start to climb up. Then there's one for $200,000, and then one for $100,000. So it's really, most anything is workable. Obviously, I would like to caution, or if that's the right word, that right now I have four and a half million dollars' worth of equipment is what we have to replace its life cycle. The life cycle that I currently have everything on is around 11 years. That covers most of the Highway Department. Some of the solid waste stuff runs 15 to 20, so you might not see those on here because it's outside of this 10-year plan. The more we don't do, the more it's going to cost. So and then my other thing is how I have this set up is to carry a balance. Some years, we're going to carry a big balance in that account. That's the only way that I can do it without spiking this ask every year to get up to 600,000 or 700,000, which could easily do. The other thing I have done is I've changed, Lynda and I have talked about this, Jim and I have talked about this. The other thing that I have done is actually changed what we're going to buy. So we're going to steer away from the 10-wheelers, and we're going to downsize those to sixes. I don't really feel they're as needed so much anymore. We don't do the construction that the town used to do. The main reason we have them now is to do to service the North Wolfboro area for plowing and sanding. How I have set this up is to keep my truck count the same, but to more evenly spread out the size of the trucks, which then would allow me to, under the current system we have, to put more trucks in North Wolfboro, smaller, more trucks. So instead of two 10-wheelers, I could put three 6-wheelers over there or split up the Beach Pond Run and the North Wolfboro Run, which right now is serviced by a 6-wheeler and two 10-wheelers, and probably service that with four 6-wheelers. Some configuration like that to, we're running some of our runs at 15 or 16 center lane miles, which is which is too much. So I need to get that smaller. It's even, it's a bit much for a 10-wheeler, the amount of time that it takes to go over there and come back. So I'm trying to shrink that down. This does this. It doesn't spike the money count. If anything, it saves us, it's too early to project, but I'd say roughly $25,000 savings by having three 6-wheelers versus two 10-wheelers and a one-time. So the money is negligible. It's more of a efficiency for us and just a overall better model, I think. So whatever gets decided this year, I would very much like my 380. I'm not going to, I'm not going to say I don't want it. However that shakes out, just keep in mind, I will continue to. However that shakes out, just keep in mind, I will continue to structure it so that I can fund this for 10 years out. So, whatever we do, I will continue to tweak those numbers. And it is a living document, too, because next year, when I get new prices, it's going to change. But I have some stuff in here to balance that out to be a reasonable number, I think, with the amount, the sheer amount of equipment that we have.
I'm very much in support of getting the 6-wheelers instead of the 10-wheelers. We've talked about 10-wheelers is a big truck coming on some of our roads. I think the 6-wheelers and be able to shorten some of the routes makes sense to me. I would like to park this. I want to fund something, I think, or maybe we can't. But this is a place where we can do some talking and looking at maybe doing a bit, maybe not the whole, or we may come to a decision we want to do it all. But I just think this is one of those that we should park as we start to try to figure out what we really can ask for in one year. Brian?
Yeah, the only, I agree, Lynda, and the only other thing that I think is, is there any way to manipulate your data so that the balance in your account is more consistent? 55,000, 5,000, then a negative 145,000? Is there any way that we could? I know it would mean some years you would have big asks and other years you would have small asks. And I know you're trying to keep your ask consistent, but I like funds when we always have $50,000 as a cushion for the balance in it.
I mean, I could, Brian, but that's, what we buy and what we do is so not.
Predictable.
Consistent or predictable.
Okay.
So, you know, there is no negative numbers in here. So, that column you're looking at is not the negative. So, the actual balance, 163,000 next year, 18,000, because you need to look at the blue numbers versus the one next to it. So, I'm going to put in, if you look at the front sheet, just for conversation piece, 2026, I'm going to ask for 390, but I'm going to spend 535 because I saved money the prior two years. And then the number's going to drop and then I'm going to spend a little less. Number's going to go back up so that in a couple of years again, I could spend more. And I'm not coming to you going, at least every year, you can say, well, between now and the end of the decade, we're going to change it by 20 grand. That's not a whole lot of shift.
This looks to me to be the way we want a Capital Reserve account to, to work, and we're saving some for the bigger equipment without spiking it.
Yes. So, thanks for this, Steve. This is good. So, there's a, there's a piece of paper here that says we have a DPW Vehicle Replacement Fund that had a principal balance of 481 and you tagged it for 357,000, left a balance of 123,000. Is this what we're talking about here?
Yes.
And I can find my way to this document from this document.
Yes, I think that 120-something is, is not accurate at the moment. The last one that we got the other day was 168, which is in that right-hand column. That was as of this.
So, here's a math problem that you may want to consider. So, you, you let out that you've got about four and a half million dollars' worth of hardware sitting out there. It's, it's in various.
Yes.
Shapes and forms, okay? And it's in various points in their life cycle, broken, unbroken, whatever. I just pulled this out of my ear. Average, you know, your, your life cycle on a piece of gear might be 10 years. That says that you, you depreciate, if we were doing taxes, you'd depreciate about $409,000 a year on a straight-line basis. That would suggest that you probably ought to be parking 409 grand for your, you know, to fund your depreciation, kind of a model that people use. You currently have 123,000, so if I was, if, if we were going to kind of say, let's, let's kind of chew on this for a while and whether we do 6-wheel dumps or what color we paint, and I'm not being disrespectful. I have no idea what the right model is for what kind of asset you want to put on the road, and I think that's important for Lynda and all of us to know and Jim. But if you just did a math problem, you'd have a $409,000 depreciation. You need to fund it. You've got a 123 you already have in the bank residual from what you've already, that gives you about 280 grand you should, you might want to ask for or less, or something less. So, your 380, to me, sounds like you're building a cushion, which is okay. But if, if we're going to park this, which I agree we should do, I'd ask you to process this and then come back to us and say, look, I need to fund a replacement in the next 12 to 18 months. And that would be a good starting point for us to have a conversation. You following me?
Yeah, I just, your numbers aren't, I don't follow your numbers.
Then here, just do the math up.
No, 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 I understand what you're saying.
Total gross investment minus depreciation, that's your annual funding. Figure out how much money you need in the next year, come back and tell us that that's a good number.
The, the only, the hole in the logic, Paul, is it's not a consistent 409,000. You're taking, you're breaking it up over a decade, which, which is, seems okay, but because of some things are going to cost more than $400,000 in that year. So, it's, it's, it is building a cushion. It's building a cushion so that, you know, 280 this year is going to be 670 next year.
That's the Brian point when we were talking about police cruisers. If you sit, if you sit here and do nothing, the cost of the cruiser goes up, whatever percentage on an annual. I got that part, but you're, you're just trying to fund your depreciation and you're trying to come up with a near-term, I need some extra, extra cash. That's, that's the math problem, at least for me. And so, I agree with Lynda that we should park this for more study.
Dave, okay, parking it? Or what?
I'm fine with the number. I just, you know, I don't have any issue with this number or approving this 380.
Okay, Brad?
Put Dave on this.
Yeah, as, as he alluded, it's going to do this anyway. Going to go up and down. At least we have money in here. What's that number going to, how much do you think that number's going to change for?
I, I don't know. That's what I'm asking. Tell me. What is it going to change next year? Is it going to change?
I think he's already, he's already shown us what it's going to do.
It's on here. It's on here. It's every year what I'm going to ask for till 2034. It's right in the, it's in the funding column.
450.
I don't, I don't think so.
Put your finger on the, hang on. Put your finger on the, on the funding column for year one.
Year one, which would be this year, 380. Next year, 390. 27, 400. 28, 410.
So, you're saying is you need 380 grand just to tread water?
Yes.
And whatever's residual, that 123 stays at 123?
So, okay, if you look at the funding column, okay?
Yeah.
See the funding column, then you see the spending column?
Yeah.
You take that out, leaves you the balance down, down to the next year. Take that out, leaves you the balance. Once you get down to 2026, I'm asking for 390, I'm spending 535. That balance goes down to just over $18,000 and so on, so forth. So, I projected the, the request for funding.
The next question is, you, can you live without some of this stuff?
So, this is everything that we use all the time.
I got that, that was, that's, that, but can you live without? You can't. So, it's like a non-starter. If you don't have it, services go down. The 900 is at risk?
Yes, everything would be at risk at that point. I mean, we will always do everything that we can to make do with what we have. But if you're asking me, the longer we keep the material, the longer we keep the equipment, then you start to look at the operating budget and then you start to look at the repair number that goes up, right? So, this stuff has a shelf life, and the shelf life is actually less than what I have projected because we can't replace it within the life expectancy of what it should be. And we're actually on, we're on an 11-year cycle and it should be on a seven. We just can't afford to put it on a seven.
And it used to be on a 20.
It used to be on a 20.
I got it. Your four options then really are really, I don't, I don't understand the four options. What's the difference between one and four?
He giving, he giving us a, if we say, okay, I, I'm not going to fund any of the Capital Reserve accounts, here's what it's going to look at. If you want to give me 100,000, this is what it's going to look at.
You give me 200, this is what it's going to look like.
This is what it's going to look like. So, it gives us the option.
Transplantation.
When we come down to trying to figure out how much money we can ask the public for.
So, did you see this? Anybody see this before, just this morning? Because I, I'm, I'm fresh at it. Anybody else seen it?
Nope. I handed out to you guys this one. So, this is the old, this is the same one that I put together last year, just dropped off.
Absolutely.
You know, it's the same one that's been since I've been here, the one I built originally in '22, and then I've just updated it.
Yes, and I found it on, I went to the deliberative session presentation, it was there.
It was there?
Oh, absolutely. So, this is just, and I think what Steve and I had a conversation with Steve and saying, I don't know what I'm going to have to cut. We're going to have to cut something. He said, well, I'll put some scenarios together. This is what we have. That's why I'd like to park it and see where we are as we come down. And I don't know which of these numbers makes sense.
Right.
For us to put in.
I don't either.
We're going to have to make some decisions. We might decide to do the whole thing. We might decide to do 100. We might decide to do nothing.
Yeah, because we have the options of 100, 200, or 380.
Yes.
And Steve just said that he can make all three of them work. The 380 is the best case for his department and to fund his equipment.
We're going to go to work tomorrow.
Correct.
Anyway, right? So, but my job is to present to you what we need to do that job to the best of our ability, and that's where we are at. So, when I came here, we were on a 20 to some equipment who was scheduled for 40-year replacement, which is massively unrealistic. So, we have taken that and we have started to get this to, you know, I've sat here this morning and I've listened to all of the comments on the Capital Reserve plans and things to take those in, to give them, to give these, something like this to you guys.
Perfect.
Which is what it is that you're asking for, which is, what do you need to do? Where do you need to get to? How much money? What's in the bank?
Yep.
So, then I have a, just if I could, so then my flipside question is, is 380 enough?
380 is enough.
It's enough.
It's enough, because if, I will never ask for something that's not enough.
I'm just asking the question so I can put a period on the end of it. It's enough.
It's enough. It's enough for this year.
So, I'll make a motion to move this Public Works Vehicle and Equipment Replacement Capital Reserve Fund to the warrant article.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion by Brian and a second by Dave.
And can we just clarify? That's a motion to approve the article, correct?
Correct.
Not to move it to the warrant.
That's correct. There's nothing to be here.
My only issue is I, I just, I need to study it. Just got it this morning, want to study it.
My feeling is I want to have the option to take a look at this and decide which of those options that I feel we may will need. The ask is huge, and I think the voters are going to want us to make some decisions and others we're just going to put out to them. So, that's why I want to hold it, because I think this is one that we can have a conversation and when we get to a final number, decide where we want to go.
And I apologize, I wasn't at the deliberatives, you know, I, I wasn't here, so, you know, I'm going to blame that on being a rookie and not understanding and all that crazy stuff. So, personal responsibility. I just, I'm not going to support doing that now. I'm sure we'll discuss it.
Okay. I have a motion to recommend by Brian, a second by Dave. All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, two against. All right. I need a motion to move to the warrant.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, same first, second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Three, four, two against. All righty.
Good.
Next one, Sidewalk Capital Reserve.
I, I just want to make a statement about that article that we just voted on. That will go on to the Budget Committee with a split vote recommending it. And I think the takeaway on that is everybody is supportive of the article. You're just not sure if you're supportive of the amount at this point.
We're not supportive of the warrant article as written, is how I see it. That's what I'm.
That's how, that's how I would say it as well.
Yeah.
So, I, I think, I think the point that the town managers made is a, is an important point. We don't support the article as written. Doesn't mean we don't, we just need more study time that we lost on that one, so.
Yep.
Be that as it may.
Yep.
Yep, okay.
Okay, so your next article is the Sidewalk Capital Reserve Funding. This is in front of you for $50,000, 2 cents on the tax rate. Given the year, I do think that you should remove this.
You should what, Dave?
Remove this.
I'll make a motion, remove it.
Well, I have one question first.
But I can get the motion and then I can go to you.
Okay.
So, I've.
I'm just, I'm sorry.
I've got a motion by Dave to move, to remove this. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? Brian?
How much do you have in the account right now? I have talked to a lot of people recently that, you know, it's a big thing. They want the sidewalks kept in good shape.
So, we have, I think.
138, 412.
Yeah, I was going to say 125. So, it's 130, 138, 412 according to Paul. With, it's hard to answer your question to some extent. With the, all the construction happening out through here.
Yeah.
With the proposed construction happening out down through there.
Yeah.
We're patching in sidewalks where we can because that's what we can do. We don't have enough money to rebuild sidewalks.
Correct.
To have somebody come in and do it. So, we are just patching. The other part of that, I can list off a half a dozen sidewalks in town that need to be done, but so does the road that goes with it. So, we're at the same thing of, do we put the money towards the sidewalk that we're going to rip up the road in a couple of years and redo it? So, it's a matter of continual to patch, I think is the best course of action for the time being.
When we, and this is a question that I just want to know. When we finish the downtown water sewer and drainage, will we be addressing those sidewalks then?
Yes.
So, that will be new. And then when the South Main project goes through with the state, that will be new.
Correct.
So, that will alleviate a lot of concern for a lot of people, but they have to be patient.
Of course. You know, because that'll take care of, from Kingswood to the bridge, will all be new sidewalks. You know, from, from McNannas down to Weston Auto, that sidewalk needs repair, and that's on our list for next year to do some work with that. You know, Mill Street sidewalk needs repair. We know that. But again, Mill Street needs repair. So, it's, it's finding that balance between what is patched and what is rebuilt and trying to do that with a global outlook.
Okay. So, I'm fine removing this question.
Yep.
So, if we're going to remove it, which is fine, do you have an idea, doesn't go in front of the voters yet, but do you have an idea of which ones are going to get patched?
Um.
Got 138,000 bucks.
It won't be, we won't spend $138,000 patching sidewalks.
No, I understand, but you have 138,000, you don't know which ones are going to get patched.
We're going to take care of, like I said, probably from, from high school down to Westies needs some work. We have some on North Main that needs some work. So, those are what we've identified as of right now. The other part of that is let's see how they hold up over winter. Something might happen between now and then that changes that outlook. It's easier to plan the roads than it is to plan the sidewalks.
But to the point that was made, that there are people that are, you know, have concerns about sidewalks, it would not be a bad idea at some point after the year begins and the snow is done, that you, you come forward and you say, here's kind of a theory about what we want to do about sidewalks. what we want to do about sidewalks. That wouldn't be a bad idea.
I'll put together a same, a similar sheet like I have for the roads.
Thank you. Yeah, that'll be good.
Okay. I have a motion by Dave, a second by Brian, to remove this from the 2024 warrant. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. We're at a time, we're about 10 of 11. We've been here for quite a while. We knew when we started this that Dave had a dentist appointment and would be leaving. And so my question to the board is, is this the time to stop and schedule another meeting, which Dave could be part of? Or do you want to keep on going through? We've got water and sewer, and then we have a whole bunch of miscellaneous. We've got a ways to go. We do have two staff members who have been here that may have some input on those. I just would like the board to give me some direction.
I think it'd be important to be able to have Dave here. You know, a lot of these decisions, I think, should be decided on by the entire board. You know, kind of just thinking right now off the top of my head. So I'd assume, schedule another meeting. We could go through the water sewer ones and some of the other miscellaneous ones that are on our list here.
Paul?
I agree with Brad. Dave is a member of the governing body, and this is important stuff. These are the big numbers now. This isn't the small stuff. Not that your stuff isn't big, but this is, these are big numbers, and I think Dave's background and experience is important. I'd recommend we have him present when we do this.
Brian?
Agreed.
Yeah, I definitely agree that this, we need to function as a board. So let's get our calendars out. I know you guys just like to spend the morning with us.
As long as Brian brings food, I mean, I'm in.
All right.
What did everybody think about a morning meeting?
Depends upon whether I have other committee meetings. You know, I have a bunch of committee meetings in the morning. Where do we put it in? And then you and I have budget hearings, so our evenings are taken up. How does Tuesday, December 17th look for people?
Union negotiations.
Okay.
What time of motion? In the morning?
I think it's nine.
Nine.
Could we do an afternoon one, or is that just going to fry you guys?
I think it's going to be.
Okay.
Because we, we have two rounds. One at 9:30, it starts, we meet at nine, and then the second round starts at one.
Right.
Okay.
Our EDC is the 19th, correct?
Our what?
EDC?
No, EDC is on the 17th in the morning.
On the 17th.
Yeah. I've got an appointment on the, let's see what day, on Wednesday, the 18th, and I could start at 10, but then I have a meeting at 1. And then I have a Zoom meeting on 5, at 5:40 Wolfborough Bay, and then we have a Board of Selectmen's meeting. So let's take a look at Thursday, the 19th.
Hang on. So after, so like at 10 o'clock, we could do it on the 18th? Would that work?
Now Linda has three meetings that day. She said, that's too much to overload her.
I'll have 10, then I'll have something at 1, something at 4:30, and a Board of Selectmen's meeting at 6:30.
Yeah, that's too much.
If I, it would be, I, would I do it? Yes. The 19th would be a better day for me.
Yeah, and the 18th, look, we took three hours and we only got, not halfway or halfway. You, you won't, we won't finish if we do it that day either.
I'm not here on the, on that Friday. I apologize.
It's a Thursday. That's the 19th. It's the 19th, Thursday, the 19th.
I'm good on 3 o'clock on Thursday.
I'm not here on that Thursday.
What about the 16th?
I'm out, I'm physically out of town when they're on the 19th.
How about the 16th?
I'm okay.
The 16th would be good, because that would allow us to potentially button some of it up on the 18th, and be able to potentially hand some of it off to the Budget Committee on the 19th.
Okay, so we'd have to do it at 2 o'clock at noon. The senior meals is here, and I'm
We could go elsewhere.
Well, I'm, I'm serving for that, so I'm tied into that one.
I'm good in the afternoon.
So I would think by 1:30, I should be free from that?
Yep.
That's close. They're still cleaning up after.
2 o'clock.
Someone has the great call rented after.
Yeah, we can go elsewhere if we have.
So we can, you and I have a Budget Committee meeting at 6, so we could do it between 2 and 5?
One.
You and I have to.
We could do one.
Okay, they could clean up. I don't know how long, we were, we're going to do somewhat of a presentation at that. So would it be done maybe 1:30? Huh?
Someone has the room rented.
Yes.
Yeah, so I'm saying 1 o'clock in the library.
We're going to go to another spot.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm just looking at when the senior meals will be enough done to leave. So is it 1, or is it 1:30?
Well, we're going to need four hours. So.
I don't think you're going to need that long for the rest of these.
You don't think so?
I, I really don't.
Okay, so 1:30?
1:30 would be better for me.
1:30, the 16th at the library.
Well, we don't know. It's going to be at the library.
I will work on getting that confirmed today.
There's also the possibility of the room at Popwell.
Yeah.
Okay, this is.
Do you have an Aki Lodge?
We've done that before.
1:30 to 16.
I agree.
Yes. 1:30, the 16th.
To be, location to be determined.
Yes.
Correct.
And two moments.
1:30, did you say, Linda? Well, good. 16.
I said 1:30. Okay, and we will start with water.
Water.
So.
Sure.
I need, let's see, there's no other business. Any public input? Hearing none. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, Brian, Brad, all those in favor?
Aye.
Only thing we need to find out is whether Dave can make that time. Brad, will you check that out with Dave and get back to me?
I will.
Thank you.